Good evening. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's work session for Monday, August the first. I will call the meeting to order and I will ask the Honorable Chief District Judge William Hamby Jr. and our Board Attorney, Mark Enricus, if they'll please join Ms. Grace Minnet at the podium for the swearing in of our newly appointed board member.
Hold it in your left hand. Okay.
Do you, Grace M. Minnet, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of this state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
And do you swear that you will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of Cabarrus County Board of Education member, according to the best of your skill and ability, according to law, so help you God?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, good thing.
Thank you Judge Hamby for being here with us tonight. And we would like to say welcome back to Mrs. Minnet. We are glad that you are here with us tonight.
Well, thank you for having me back. I'm looking forward to it.
Good. Okay, and with that, a couple of things. We are going to need to amend the agenda. There is a calendar, academic calendar error that was found. Dr. Colleen Sane will discuss that with us in a few moments, but I also would like to add that due to some questions and needed information, some recommendations on some of the policies, that we table tab number seven to our August fifteenth business meeting. So with that said, may I have a motion that we approve an amended agenda to add a calendar decision tonight and also to table tab number seventy-seven, First Reading of Policy Revisions and New Policy Proposals?
Same move.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. We will begin with our reports section, which is, board members, your tab number one, and that is your construction budget report. And we will have Ms. Kelly Klutz to the podium.
Good evening. Under attachment number one, you'll find your construction budget report, and there's not a lot of activity that we have not encumbered or encountered before this budget report. So I'll just call your attention to the one net change in Winkler, and that's the one that has the most activity right now, primarily technology, FFNE, things that you would expect right now. We've also done a little bit of paving of a road in gravel, issuing purchase orders for that at that school. Are there any questions? Or she's reaching.
Board members' comments or questions, now we'll begin on Mr. Kiger's side.
Just to clarify for me, that remaining to be paid is bills we know of that are coming?
Remaining to be paid, those are the ones that have purchase orders outstanding, contracts outstanding, yes, that's things that we have.
Okay. No, no, I don't have any further questions.
Ms. Carpenter?
No.
Mr. Furr?
No.
Ms. Burtonbaugh?
Do we expect the sales tax refund on the middle school, Winkler Middle School, to go up?
It will definitely go up, but with these particular schools, we have to request those funds from the county to be able to use them in the construction line items, in the FFNE and technology line items. We do get to use those automatically.
Okay. I guess, I was just looking at, you know, comparative to other projects. It seemed like it was higher.
That's the reason, because they're holding the construction line items. We're not getting those amounts automatically.
Okay. I'm just thinking, from a reporting standpoint, we should probably include them. That way we can show through that cooperation with the county how much we were able to return.
Okay. Okay, we'll have to work with the county to get those. We're not seeing those right now.
Okay.
They're holding it, but I can ask for those amounts.
Thank you.
Ms. Minnet, do you have any questions? Okay, Mr. Shu.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we will move to your tab number two, Title I School Choice Report. We will have Dr. Marion Bish to the podium.
Tonight, just an update to the board, as we do each year at this time. We are in the process of complying with the federal school choice regulations that, again, are still in place with No Child Left Behind. We have not changed any of the pairings. We have no new schools that are involved in this. The same schools are involved, the same pairings are being used. All of our processes are the same. Everything's been sent out. We're in full compliance, so we want the board to be aware that we have not changed those pairings. The other issue that I did want to share with the board, I left this upstairs and had to run upstairs and get it. I'm way too old to go down them stairs that fast. The other thing I wanted to share with you, though, was we do have one school that is not offering choice this year, that did last year. I wanted to explain that. We did a request to DPI that Coltrum Web be removed from the sanctions, and the request was based on the fact that the school is being changed to a STEM magnet, and as such, the population of the school will dramatically change. And therefore, it really is almost a start over, and we petitioned for exactly that, a start over model. And we were able to provide the data that's required to show that 50 percent of the children will be new, that we have a new principal, a new assistant principal, and with other factors that they require. The data was accepted. DPI did approve that, and Dr. Atkinson also has approved it. So Coltrum Web will come off the school choice list, off of all sanctions. They will not have SES services this year, the supplemental services. They are considered the first-year Title I school, so they are back at square one, we could say. And so that's kind of good news, because it takes that off the shoulders of the teachers, the administrators, and as they're trying to get STEM up and running and really work on that magnet program and that STEM program, that's one less thing they have to focus on. So as you look at this, you will see that is the only change from where we did school choice pairings from last year. Can I answer any questions for anyone?
I'll start on Mr. Shu's end.
Marion, on the pairings of the schools, obviously it's the same as it was last year. Is this the second year, or has it been more years that the pairings have stayed the same?
Depends on the school. We keep the pairings the same as much as possible. The reason for that is stability for the children, number one. Sometimes, if we change the pairings and parents cannot provide transportation to that school, then the children are bounced. And so, as much as possible, we maintain stability. So for some of these, this is the third year that they would be like that. The other thing is, because we now have pairings that are all non-Title I schools, we don't have to change them based on a Title I school then, no longer being open to us.
Ms. Minnet?
This is a catch-me-up question. Are all the students at Coltrum Web going to be participating because they went to the magnet school, or are they part of those children that were remaining in Coltrum Web?
Both. The board, and probably the board might give you a little more information, the boundaries for Coltrum Web were changed, made smaller, and the children who were within those boundaries remained at Coltrum Web as participants in the program. But those children who were at Coltrum Web were allowed to apply to be part of the STEM program, and I believe preference was given to those students. Then, some of those children were redistricted to Urban Elementary, but all children who are attending Coltrum Web this fall are in the STEM program. It is a 100 percent STEM magnet.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the limitations, because I think some of these elementary schools are a little high on capacity already, the receiving schools. So do we have a cap or something on the number of students who can go to any particular one?
What we do is, because the federal law doesn't allow us to use capacity as a reason not to do school choice, we're real careful about how we handle that, but we are well aware of capacity issues. When we do the actual placement of students whose parents apply, we first place children who are already there, and they're already counted anyway in that enrollment count. Then, Dr. Sane and Donna Smith, and then my office, along with Transportation, we're all around the table, and we look at parents' first choice and second choice, and then we literally look for that grade level and say, are there seats available in that grade level today in that school? And we balance first and second choice against how many open seats are in there, so that we are being very, very careful about that, particularly this year with budget like it is.
Mr. Furr?
Over the last two years, do you have any idea on the number of students that chose to go to the other schools?
To school choice?
Yeah.
It's very interesting. Every year, we average between 200, 225 roughly, for all of the schools combined. Now, this year, as I said, Coltrum Web will be coming out of it, but there were very, very few children in Coltrum who took school choice. So we average about 2 to 225.
Ms. Carpenter?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Kiger?
I'm fine.
Okay. The only question that I have was along Mr. Furr's. Normally, you get a report out to us that shows where we are, how many has decided to go, not go, give us a comparison table from previous years. Can you make sure you get that out to us again?
I will.
That would be great.
We will have that. We actually do the placements on August the 12th. The parents have until the 10th to return the packet to request transfer. We'll use the 11th to update the databases, get it all together, and then we meet on the morning of the 12th. So it'll probably be the week or so after that, if that's okay with you, or the week or so after school starts.
And you know what? That, or if that's a piece of information that can come to us at the retreat, you know, when you're pulling all those reports that come to us at the retreat, that'll be fine, too.
No problem. We'll be glad to do that, Ms. Black.
Thank you. Okay. Sure. Key up.
One question, and what, you know, next year, when will the parents have to apply to Coltrum, say, to go to the STEM program for Coltrum Web?
I believe that they apply annually. Is that correct, Donna? Since that's the process that the board has used in all other student transfers. So I believe, Ms. Carpenter, that each year, they apply to remain there, return to a home school, but I'll let Donna answer that.
What our plan is, to actually first survey those who are in attendance at the STEM program, to see those who are planning to return the following year. And this past year, we actually opened our applications in January, so that actually starts that process prior to our beginning of student transfers in March. So we would begin with those students currently at the school to see what openings we have for the following year, and then we would open it up countywide shortly after that January check-in time.
So January of this coming year, say, if there was a, somebody, say, a parent that wanted their child to go, would they just announce that openly for all the parents then?
We would do that, just as we did this year. We had an information campaign, which was to get every school notified of the STEM program. And the nice thing is, this year, we'll have one year under our belts, if we could word it that way, so we could also have parent reporting outs at that time, too. But again, keeping folks aware, we have two STEM programs. We have the elementary program that was, Marion was addressing, as well as the middle school program at J and Fries.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bish. Next, board members, your tab number three is the 2011 Student Scholarship Plus Report, and we'll have Mrs. Donna Smith back to the podium.
I am very excited to present to you this report, and by saying that, I guess you can tell, I think we have some good news. And I'd like to begin just walking you through the information, because exactly one year ago, I think, I came to you at that time, giving you the scholarship report for 2010. Now we're looking at the scholarship report of 2011, and as a catch-me-up, it's important to realize this is an online communication tool. It's actually a national tool, developed by folks right outside of Cabarrus County in Charlotte Mecklenburg, and we join numerous other districts in North Carolina using this as a tool. That's why we were having some comments earlier about how do you find Scholarship Plus? It's easy sometimes even to get on the San Diego Scholarship Plus website, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But the reason I'm excited is actually this first slide you will see on your screens, as well as on the TV monitors here. In economic times such as what we're facing right now, we would never have predicted that our Scholarship Plus total for 2011 is actually $19 million. I should say over $19 million, $19,774,000. That is tremendous. Even when you look back the year before, even in tough economic times, we were at $16 million. And you can see particularly since 2009, we've made some major changes. And yet, at the same time, I want to say, I cannot stand here and say that this is 100 percent accurate in terms of that's all the scholarships that were awarded in Cabarrus County, because we were able to record through the ending of school, which is around June the 14th. And what happens, we have numerous faith-based organizations and other foundations that give scholarships after that point, which would be in addition to this. We struggle every year trying to make sure that we're getting as many as we can. And here, I think I'd like to feature particularly Mount Pleasant High, Sabrina Furr. Sabrina Furr works as the enrollment specialist there, as well as we term the registrar for the high school, and she almost stands at the office door at Mount Pleasant as seniors are coming in and out, saying, "Did you let us know about your scholarships?" And you'll see in a moment that that's paid off for that school. At the same time, we do have students who graduate who have not yet received some of the scholarships that have been awarded. But when $19 million starts to happen, that begins to tell you have a lot of different varieties in scholarships, which we'll see on the second screen. The breakdown that $19 million, seven, shows we have some scholarships that are termed academic scholarships. We have some that are termed athletic scholarships, and some that are termed military. Last year, we could not give you the military breakdown, because this is a newer piece of the software program. But the idea here, even though it says athletic there, those are athletic rides. We are still compiling our data in terms of number of athletes that have earned academic scholarships. So I want to make sure I clarify that that athletic are athletic-based scholarships for rides to colleges. And we usually, numerously, I'm forgetting the percentage right now, have a number of athletes that earn the academic scholarships. So that gives you a breakdown in that regard. It also tells you we had 825 academic scholarships, 52 athletic, and five military. When you look at that, you can probably guess upfront which one of the highest value scholarships. And I think you'll see that on the next page. You saw where I said five scholarships before. Military ride runs anywhere around $414,000. And what you're looking at is the complete time they're in school. So when a school is fortunate enough to have a student that gets a military scholarship already, you can see what happens to scholarship dollars. But I don't want to overemphasize that too much, because I want to go back and look where the highest number of scholarships are awarded, and you'll see there's 237 scholarships valued between $25 and $1,000. Every value is extremely important, and that's why, as we have donors approach us and say, "I'd like to give a scholarship for this amount of money. Is that too little?" No, there is no amount too little. Our task, I think, is to align the students with knowing that scholarship's there, and every scholarship is valuable, too. And I know, from a parent's perspective, they like the $25 scholarships, but you'll see the totals vary. By and large, the majority of our scholarships fall between $25 and $1,000, and the second highest would be the $1,000 to $10,000 value. But every year, as I show you the data, those particular values do change. I'd like to show you now the slide that looks school by school, and I have arrows to the side just to show between 2010 and 2011, did we go up or down? And you'll see we have a couple down arrows, and we have numerous up arrows. And again, the value, we have to go back to, it may have been the same number of scholarships awarded, but it could have had a different value. And so that's why, as we're working with our scholarship reps from each school, when they're disappointed that their numbers may not have lined up with where they were the year before, we say, "Just take notice, because every year, the lead school will change." And it changes by virtue of just the range of scholarships. Okay? I also wanted to show you, then, the school summary of scholarships, and the bold-faced columns, to me, are the key, but I also wanted to show you the comparisons between 2009, 2010, and then 2011. But for example, scholarships, the number that were awarded from Central Cabarrus this past year were 81, and as you'll look over to the farhand side, you will see students. That means 43 different students were awarded these 81 scholarships. Some students receive more than one, are awarded more than one scholarship, and it's interesting, sometimes they run from one to seven scholarships apiece. But as you go down, the other piece is to notice, particularly in the scholarship column, let's look at Concord, for example. In 2010, 104 scholarships were awarded, and this year, 158 were awarded. Go to Robinson, you'll see last year, I guess I technically should say year before last now, shouldn't I? 137 scholarships were awarded, and this year, 105. Now, at first look, folks will say, "Well, gee, why didn't Robinson work harder? And what did Concord do to raise their other piece?" But the key thing in looking at this, every year, if we have private donors of scholarships, they may necessarily each year change the way they do this. Some years, the scholarships are offered, some years, they're not. Sometimes it's special foundations that will bring scholarships into a school one year and not another, but it's just, again, a roving kind of number, just to follow a little bit, to see the number that were awarded and then the number of students who participated. Then I wanted to show you, actually, the race column. I have not placed the percentages in here yet, but you will look from African-American, Asian, Hispanic, multiracial, Native American, and white, all the way from 2010 to 2011, we have seen an increase in the number of scholarships as awarded into each race category. And again, the race category is difficult to follow a bit. If you follow the federal law where they've changed, particularly how we code race, it's a little different, and that will make that column a little more difficult to follow from year to year. But this, to me, is the highlight of the slides that we look at Scholarship Plus. You'll see the first column talks about the total number of scholarships. In 2009, we were reported awarding of 486 scholarships. This year, in 2011, we're reporting the awarding of 882 scholarships. I think that speaks volumes for the work that's been done from the student level, the parent level, and also the staff level. But the column, I think also, is important to break it down. You will see the seniors receiving scholarships. In 2009, we had 262 seniors receiving scholarships. That's a lot of hard words to put together. And then in 2011, we had 412 students receiving scholarships. But what becomes important there, because we're looking at unduplicated count there, that is, if I had won more than one scholarship, I'd only be counted into that total one time. We've moved based upon the number of seniors from a 17 percent in 2009 to 22 percent in 2011. And you may sit there and add those numbers, think, "Well, that doesn't seem like a big jump," but we consider that a pretty huge jump in several ways. One, we're getting more seniors represented in the scholarship place, but also, we're continuing to grow in spite of a lot of scholarships being pulled back, particularly during these economic times. So it is with much pleasure, I present to you that report, but also, at the same time, saying, "Where do we go next?" Because we continue to try to raise our bar. The next step will be the scholarship information that I've just shared with you will be shared with representatives from each high school. We have a task force that looks at this each year, and in that task force, what we go back to is develop a plus delta. What do we do well? How can we improve? And that's the team that is charged with that. And it's also a good task between each school to learn what the other schools are doing, because what may work at one school this year may not work at that same school the next year, and so we try to vary around the approaches a bit. And also, this coming year, we've been communicating with CFNC, which is the College Foundation of North Carolina, to bring more statewide instruction for our parents from the financial end of things, as well as just understanding more about colleges, which will be in addition to our annual college night. So this is our report on Scholarship Plus for the actual year we have just completed.
Okay. Well, that will begin on Mr. Kiger's side. Comments or questions?
Well, this certainly is good news and makes someone with a child that is staring these costs right in the face, I love to personally look at this information. So this is terrific, and I'm glad to know that there's so many students in our district that are capable of not only obtaining the scholarship, but performing at a level that then goes on to get notification to be able to receive the scholarship. I think that's outstanding. One, I guess, there's two things that stand out to me, and the sheer number of scholarships above the $10,000 mark, that, to me, looks like a pretty high number. I don't know what it would be, I guess I don't have a baseline to compare to other districts, but that just likes, looks like a lot of scholarships at a very high level, and I think that's outstanding. And the other thing that I noticed was that, is there, and this is more philosophical than anything, is there any, I guess I didn't really understand the concept of that things change from year to year that much with how they're distributed, but when you look at Concord and you look at Mount Pleasant, in the total number from 2010 to 11, both of those schools had a pretty significant jump. Any particular reason for that piece of it, or that's just the way it worked out? Because, I mean, everybody else is kind of, they improved, but those two are fairly significant jumps.
Both of those schools had some private benefactors that increased the number of scholarships awarded there, plus they also were two schools that received some of the highest dollar amounts for individual scholarships, and that's that high dollar amount that varies from year to year.
Well, Donna, one thing that you mentioned, I would like you to let our board, the rest of the board know it, I know we talked about it earlier, and something that I have brought up numerous times, and I know Grace, when we were talking, she brought it up also, but one thing I had been real concerned about for years was making sure that parents had easy access to find out where they could get that information, when they wanted to get, you know, find out where they could get money for their children, on different scholarships. Because on our website, when you went to it, it was buried so deep, you couldn't find it. And myself, serving on two other scholarship committees, I know we had problems getting applications. And then when people would go to our website, I'd hear parents say, "I can't find where you can get scholarships." And I know that you and Ronnie have been working, trying to make it easier for them to find that, and I know you're still in the process of that. So if you kind of let the board know maybe what y'all been doing and that you are in the process of doing that, I think that'd be very helpful. And the more you can do to make it where they can just point and click to come to that site, I would be very thankful, because there are a lot of parents out there that are not real computer savvy, and so the simpler you can make it, where you can just point and click on our website, I'd be very thankful for that.
She wants to know where it's going to be.
You know what? I was just going to ask, and it may help you, if this could be one of the reports that comes to us in the retreat as well, that would give us a good breakdown. You know, the board has talked about this many years, every year, especially graduation time, and we hear all those numbers from the principals during graduation time, we want to go, "Where are they coming from?" Yeah. So I think that would be a great piece to bring back to our retreat as well, and that may give you a little bit more time to work on it.
I can tell you, just as a quick answer, it's something Ronnie has been working on, it could be particularly on the lead page for the web, the tabs at the bottom where it says, "Parents," I may, "Community Parents, Students," I probably have the order wrong. It's a matter of clicking on that tab is where that will be populated. It's not ready to be populated yet, but for the district level, it'll be one click away, which comes back to the rule of thumb, how many clicks are they getting into there? At the school websites, it's listed under the departments, and we continue to encourage those to raise higher, where they're within two clicks. But as far as the timeframe, we would think by October at the latest. Hopefully, September is our anticipated time for population.
Perfect. Perfect timing. Okay, Mr. Furr?
Yeah. Mr. Kiger brought up something that kind of got my attention, about the other surrounding counties. Is it any way possible we could get that kind of information? I know this is good news, but, you know, we need a baseline, if possible. Is that possible to get that, or do we need to go on their websites?
That is possible to get that. That's probably one of those I would need to defer to retreat time.
No time soon. But that'd give me a better idea on where we're kind of at.
Okay.
Maybe you just need to keep a list tonight of what needs to come to the retreat. Maybe you just need to keep a list tonight of what needs to come to the retreat. Ms. Burton-Ball?
Well, Mr. Fur, you gave me a great lead-in. It was actually on the news, just in the last week or so, that Charlotte Mecklenburg is by ADM between five and six times our size, but yet their scholarship total was only about three times our size. And so, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I remember just seeing the graphic and calculating, and went, interesting, that we, and I'll say, I think we've been very successful. Always room for improvement, but I think we've been very successful. So, yeah, it would be interesting to see comparisons, but it was just, we could probably Google it. Mike, you want to do that for us?
I'm not being backed up very well.
But anyways, like I said, so I was very proud there, sitting on the couch, watching the news, saying, you know, we've done okay on that. But on a kind of a different question, this is really for Kelly Klutz, we talked about this a little bit in budget, about fees such as the Scholarship Plus that are going out to the high schools. And if we're just allocating money to the high schools and then pulling it back and saying, here's all the bills you have to pay, wouldn't it be easier just to, and we can work this through the budget, I don't want to take money away from the high schools, I want to take away the expense, but figure out how we can reallocate and just give Donna the budget for it? I think that makes more sense than Nick one dime in the high schools, saying, here you go, but we're taking it all back. So. And just a comment, Ms. Carpenter, on the website. I've actually gone out to the Scholarship Plus website, when I am out there once in a while, looking for consistencies amongst websites. The scholarship link was very obvious to me from all of the high school sites, and to me, that would be the first place parents would go. So I think they have done a pretty good job. We may need to get some prominence on the district webpage, but our district webmaster is back there. We're joking, probably making the change right now. But, thank you.
Ms. Mottet?
I think this is an excellent report. When I was on the board before, I had no idea, and this is really excellent information. I would want to put one little caveat in here, because particularly the 10,000 and above, which are considerable, that's going to vary from year to year, because so many of those scholarships are things like Merritt, or Morehead, or whatever, and they go over a wide range. So sometimes they'll go to another county and not to our county. So there will be fluctuation. So while the growth is great, and I'm not saying it's not, it's excellent, if it goes down next year, that does not necessarily mean we didn't do a good job. It may just mean that we didn't get some of those larger, or athletic scholarships as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Donna, this is amazing to me, you know, that we jumped up 3.7 million from last year. And last year was good, because it was almost double the previous year, going from nine million to sixteen million, and then going from sixteen million to almost $20 million. That's a substantial increase. And I don't know if it's contributable to a scholarship campaign in the high schools, or if we haven't, we might need to do that to get more, because that's free money. It's going to push our seniors on to more successes. And it's amazing to me that the foundations and these entities, personal and private and all, will put that much money into our school district, you know? And I'm sure there's a lot more out there to be had. And I, for one, would like to see us somehow have an aggressive scholarship campaign, starting in maybe the junior or even the sophomore year, that would, you know, provide some fruition at their senior year, and we'll see this number, 25, possibly even 30%. And when you think that we had 882 scholarships, and that went out to 400 students, well, you know, that, to me, is also proving that there's students are getting at least one, but some of them are getting more than two, three, four different scholarships. And that comes from aggressive work. I don't know if it's on the parents' part, the students' part, combination of counselors and all of that, but the bottom line is, it's done, and it's looking better. And I like to see us reach 25, 30%, and I think with a more aggressive campaign, we can do that. But other than that, it's a great report. Thank you, Donna.
Well, I totally concur. I think this speaks volumes. I know you've heard us every year at the retreats complain about not getting enough information regarding scholarships. So, you know, I think this, just during this economic times, to know that we've enhanced, you know, increased that number to that level is just huge. That tells us that there's a huge priority out there with staff and parents to place that on scholarships. That's huge, especially during economic times. I was not expecting those numbers to even be equal to last year, much less exceeded. So that is good information.
I hope I can stay here one year from now and agree again when I begin a report like this.
That will be wonderful. That will be wonderful. Have you got pretty much what you need to bring back to the retreat? As far as, okay, great.
I listed several things here.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Yes. Can you key it, please, Ms. Carpenter?
There's just one error I see on here, under, on the first page, one, on Robinson, the error needs to be different.
That was actually corrected in the slideshow piece.
Oh, was it? Okay, on ours, it wasn't. I thought, well, better.
Turn that error a different way.
Yeah, turn it the different way. Okay. All right. Got you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. All right, board members, on to tab number four, Annual Survey Reports, Staff, Students, Parents, Mrs. Kathy Auger, Mrs. Donna Smith, and Mrs. Ronnie Boone.
We're bringing to you tonight the results of our annual survey that we do with staff, students, and parents. I'd like to share the results of the staff survey. Donna Smith will discuss the student survey, and then Ronnie Boone will come up to discuss the parent survey with us. As some background information on the report, we've listed for the last three years the participation. We did note a decrease in participation by teachers this year, and we are considering what those reasons may be. This did closely follow the Teacher Working Conditions Survey, and we are now administering that every single year, not just in the year that the state does it. So that's one thing that we'll be looking at, as to whether this is repetitive, or if it does really get at some different questions, and why we need that done. It shows the response keys. The responses that were available, one was strongly disagree, two would be disagree, three would be agree, four strongly agree, and there was an option of did not answer. And for purposes of the next few slides after this, what we've done is combine agree and strongly agree, to show agreement. And finally, there were two survey versions for staff. One of the surveys was for certified staff, and it included all four priorities. The one for non-certified staff did not include the questions about teaching. Okay. So let's take a look. The first area is globally competitive students, and this will be measuring the staff perceptions of how well the school and teachers provide appropriate instruction in learning conditions for students. An area of significant increase for us this year was in the use of technology daily in teaching, and that has risen a total of 5% for over the last two years. Our schools have increased resources in this area, and this also correlates with the enhanced expectations that we have for teachers to do this now. Ninety-five percent of teachers state that they provide differentiated accelerated instruction for students who've mastered the material. Ninety-six percent report that they do understand and that they are applying 21st century teaching standards. And finally, 99% provide assistance to students academically at risk, according to the survey. 21st century professionals. This next section of the survey addresses the staff perceptions of their own training, their evaluation, and whether the employees like working at their schools, and will report on certified and non-certified separately. While the staff members participating in graduate study did decrease this year, as you'll see from the slide, we do note that we have about 43% of our licensed staff who do now possess a graduate degree. You may recall that we had the program with Winthrop, and with Winget, in that in the first year, we had two cohorts, and then we had one cohort in the second year, who were in the two-year program. We do have a new cohort with UNCC that's going to begin this fall. It will be at Wyancoph Elementary, and it's a literacy cohort. So we have had a lot of interest in that, and we're looking forward to implementing that graduate program in connection with UNCC. Some other reports in this area, 95% of certified staff reported having been observed this year, and 95% of certified staff reported enjoying being a member of their school staff. Our non-certified staff reported a decrease in training this year, and this is also an area that we're going to follow up by examining various position groupings to see what training was provided, for instance, in clerical, for bus drivers, for teacher assistants, and see if there are areas that we may need to address. 94% of staff in non-certified positions did report that they do like being a member of their school staff, and approximately 80% reported an evaluation. In healthy and responsible students, this is the area where we measure staff perceptions in the areas of safety, the values within the school, and the incidence of negative student behaviors. For certified staff, we had a high report of feeling safe at 95%. Over three-fourths of our certified staff do believe that student discipline is handled appropriately by administrators. But at the same time, we still have 37% who think that student bullying and harassment continue to be a problem that we need to work on. For non-certified staff, a very high percentage, 97%, report feeling safe. Eighty-four% believe the school atmosphere encourages respect among those in the school community. Two other noteworthy responses, at 95%, were knowing procedures for a crisis and believing that the school does provide a safe and caring environment. The final area is innovative leadership, and this measured how staff believed we communicate, both within and outside the district. 95% of our certified staff indicate the website does have current and useful information. Over nine out of 10 report an opportunity to participate in the school improvement process. And 87%, and you'll see that that's a very large jump, report receiving regular communication on system issues. And as you know, we really emphasize that with the budget process this year, and we believe that that may be partially a reflection of that. For non-certified staff, 88% of non-certified staff report effective district communication. 93% find Dr. Shepherd's emails to be relevant. And finally, 85% find ed center staff to be accessible and responsive, and another 4% did not respond to that question, which we think could indicate they didn't have interaction with ed center staff during this particular year. So what are some conclusions and next steps? We do want to continue to sponsor cohort opportunities for graduate study, especially in the areas of reading and math. And we need to assess and address training needs for non-certified staff. And finally, in another area, we want to continue to work as a community with all stakeholders for improvement of student discipline issues, especially in the areas of student bullying and harassment. Any questions on this section?
Okay. Board members, comments or questions? And I'll start on Mr. Schu's side.
Like the last comment says here, you're talking about the harassment and bullying. I find it, you know, even with the new bullying, anti-bullying policies that we've set forth, and the different things that we're doing to try to reduce bullying in schools, I find it amazing still that we got one out of three people that were surveyed says that it's still a problem. And if the staff recognizes that it's a problem, then obviously, you know, there's a lot of work needs to be done there, because bullying and ill behavior like that will not be tolerated, and it needs to be dealt with in a serious manner. You know, I mean, that's my opinion, and it looks like, you know, obviously, it's caught the attention of the right people, but we need to really push some issues on that. Dr. Shepherd, and, you know, we really, there shouldn't be no bullying in the schools, as much as we publicize that, and here we are, you know, with one in three saying that it's still there. I hope we can deal with that, see a better report on that sometime soon. Thank you.
I agree. And just one other comment on that, too, is I'm hoping that this also may be indicative of race perception, where we recognize that when it's happening, and know that we need to do something about it, too. So hopefully, as a result of this, we will take action, as you said.
Ms. Mottet?
I just want to concur with what Mr. Schu said. I do think one out of three is pretty high, and it's a very serious, as we know, problem.
Ms. Fur?
I have no comment.
Ms. Carpenter?
Lynn and Grace both, and that's where people need to make sure that if the situation is happening, that it is reported, and that you step up and say something, because if something is not reported, something cannot be done.
Mr. Kiger?
Back on page, well, our page three, the top slide, the, I'm evaluated every year by my supervisor, and it's only 80%. And that number needs to be, needs to be higher. We owe it to that person to make sure they know exactly, good or bad, wherever they stand, but to be evaluated and have that performance appraisal done.
I absolutely agree. One of the things, the teacher system is very good this year, because we were able to go back, and at the end of the year, quickly see if there were any observations missing, any evaluations, and address those. This year, we, when we, the teacher assistant evaluations came in, we, early on, we checked to be sure that we had evaluations on our teacher assistants. And while we want to certainly emphasize this with principals and supervisors, we want to also step up that ability to check these off in the system and be able to get back with those supervisors who aren't doing that. Thank you.
Ms. Auger, that, actually, the bullying and harassment, we have talked about this every year, and that really bothers me, that that has actually went up, too. When we first started discussing this in 2009, you know, we were looking to put some things in with the strategic plan, and some different school improvement, and different options. I would really like for something to come back to the retreat as well. And one of the issues I have is, you know, that's not just a North Carolina policy, it's across the United States policy. It's a problem that we're all dealing with, but there's something going on there. You know, I know that student handbook would probably be five pounds. If I had it my way, this board knows, we'd have everything signed off in there. But I just wonder if there's very much communication between the parent and the student, and not just the staff and the student, but the parent and the student, of how important this is, and for parents to understand and support that issue, because what we find with appeals, that once they get to us, they didn't understand some of those policies. You know, they didn't have a real good, clear definition of what bullying is, or what the repercussions were going to be. So we have got to figure out a way to dig a little bit deeper to get that information between the parent, the student, and the staff as well. So maybe if we could brainstorm a little bit before the retreat, that number's got to be a little different next year.
Okay. We will definitely work on that.
Great.
And that leads into Donna's part.
Thank you.
I know we'll get into bullying as part of the student perceptual piece, but I will indicate to you, this is a national trend. That does not bring any comfort to our hearts. But I was just attending a national meeting dealing with crisis intervention, and the same types of incidents that we're finding here are existing in Iowa, Michigan, and also Kentucky. That was a small group that I was working with, and it's amazing, the way it's demonstrated, the way we're finding out about it. It's very, I mean, you could not know that there was a difference between the states, even though we're all under the same piece. But as we've spent a year in awareness in Cabarrus County, it's becoming more and more reported, as it is on the news. If you watch this, particularly on television programs and everything, it's a big buzz. It needs to be a big buzz. But it's also hard, too, and this will be more philosophical that we could look at later, we're seeing a lot of evidence of bullying going on at national meetings and things like this, if you watch television. And so the models that our students are seeing now are changing, in terms of the way adults are supposed to relate to one another, and the way children see children relating to one another. And so our model through the media has really changed drastically, and so there's a strong message, as we were talking about from state to state, becomes a big issue. But if anything, if we're getting it to the point where people will talk, just as what Mrs. Carpenter was saying, that's the part we struggle the most with, with people being able to talk with us about the concern, because we know as much as we're told. Because contrary to popular belief, you cannot observe bullying. Because contrary to popular belief, you cannot observe bullying a hundred percent of the time. It happens when you, we've turned our head. And so, and I shouldn't say all the time, but quite often it's that way. So the issue is not so much trying to prove it exists, but what are we going to do now that someone has reported, "I've got a problem"? Because as long as we try to turn bullying into a black and white issue, we'll never get a solution. But we're moving toward interventions, more to come later. It got me excited.
Donna, let me ask you a quick question before we go, if I may, Madam Chair. Do we have any type of posters or any signs or anything in the schools that says anti, no bullying, anti-bullying policy, or anything, you know, that is a constant reminder in front of the students that, hey, you know, we're not going to tolerate this? Do we have anything in the schools?
Different schools have made some of their own posters in the past, but we have invested this year in a particular company that signs will be posted at every single school. We have elementary signs, middle school signs, and also high school signs now of posters that make sense. Quite often, some of the old posters are very antique-looking, for lack of a better word, they don't look like something will catch students' eyes. These are very up-to-date, very current, and they're going to be distributed the week before school. So we will have a much more visible poster campaign, and our response to the schools is not that we're asking you to take down your current posters, but these need to be there and turn into strategic places and keep them moving, because we do have to have that image there. I can't, they're sitting there ready to go out, it's almost like you knew. Thank you.
You know, people see things versus, you know, people's got to see it, and when you see it, it gets in their mind, and when they see it over and over and over and over again, they might get the picture one of these days that we're not going to tolerate this.
Absolutely.
So that's a good thing. I'm glad you got that moving. Thank you.
I'm going to move to students. And as we begin the student survey, we're really looking at these four particular issues with stakeholders. We're wanting students to feel safe. The second thing is, we want to have a climate in Cabarrus County that fosters a sense of belonging. We also want a climate that fosters restorative practices. And this is the word, particularly in our strategic plan, that's raised a lot of questions over the years, what does restorative really mean? And it means I may make a mistake, but I have a chance to go back and correct my mistake by doing something about it, not just punish me or discipline me, but give me an opportunity to make things better. And that's at the core of the new discipline law, so it's really nice to know that our strategic plan has been reflecting that, and we'll look at that in a moment. And also, we've been trying to look at what the student involvement outside the regular school day has looked like, and it's out of these domains that we start to look at the student perceptual information that we were looking at this year. It's important to remember, as we look at the grade levels, at the elementary level, with this survey, we are looking at grades three through five, because we needed a certain reading level to be able to indicate their responses. The other piece, we're looking at the secondary level, we were measuring grades six through twelve, and you'll see our measures differ, depending upon whether it's elementary or secondary. Elementary, as we ask a question, we just simply ask, is it yes or is it no? As we move to secondary, we want to know, you know, it always gets more complicated, more choices, doesn't it? Do you strongly disagree? Do you just disagree? Or do you agree, or do you strongly agree? And that's how we've measured, particularly the statements that we follow. Went to show you how many students participate currently in our survey. You'll see at the elementary level, we continued to rise this year in the number of students who reported answers. We are concerned that we did drop a little bit in our secondary responses, and we're trying to look back to determine the cause for that. But again, we still have a representative sample that we can go from and make some statements about. I'd like to break it down into the elementary and secondary, and you'll see on each of the slides, you're going to see data from two thousand nine through two thousand eleven. And the final column to the right is the two thousand eleven column, and it's bold. And the reason it's bold is, I really want to pay attention to that. The very first statement there, where it says, "My teachers care about me," becomes very instrumental when you're looking at a restorative practice or believing that I truly belong in a school. And while this number remains about the same every year, that becomes somewhat of our foundation, because people go where they're valued. And by and large, if our children feel like they're warmly accepted at school, that's a very good beginning, and so we take strong feelings that that's a good response. We're also very pleased to see that students report, "I am responsible for my behavior." We do not live in a world anymore where everybody feels responsible for their behavior. And so the fact that I say I am responsible, now, in long run, if you ask me a lot of questions, I may try to side out of it just a little bit, but I am responsible, and I know the school rules, because I know that's been a concern from time to time, do children misbehave because they don't know the rules? On survey-wise, in grades three through five, we know the rules. The piece that we look at restorative practice comes the next question, when I break a rule, someone helps me learn from my mistake. You'll see we stay around the eighty percent level with this. We've already looked at particularly, I have been bullied at school this year, and we see the thirty-eight percent there mirrors exactly where Kathy was talking about with the certified rating a little bit ago, and I think that's interesting, that our percentages are very much the same. But it's also interesting, I have bullied other children at school this year, we get a report of fifteen percent. That's important. While that may look like a low number, I can tell from the responses we've already heard tonight, that's not a low number for us. We're looking for nothing. We don't even want to see a single digit on that. So again, that is student perception for this year. We also move on to elementary questions, like I participate in a service project that helped others. We continue to struggle with, do our students fully understand the definition of service project? And so as I point this percentage out, I'd like to say, we're not a hundred percent sure that we've got a good founding on that word yet. You'll see also, we find it interesting, I participate in physical activities at school, ninety-one percent of our children say they do. A hundred percent of our children are required to do this, K through eight, so we're going to have to make sure we realize we're doing physical activity. That's just interesting. And again, the other pieces, as we look at being well, providing healthy food choices, and I am taught what's healthy to eat, we think those still are pretty good percentages at eighty-four to eight percent. As we move to secondary level questions, things change a little bit. My teachers care about me, sometimes we think it becomes a little less important at the secondary level, but no. When students believe, again, at the secondary level, they're cared about, you see a fewer behavior problems and so forth surface. But again, that's at eighty-two percent. Where it says, "Teachers at my school respect my views and opinions," about three-quarters think they do. There's a quarter that perceives maybe not. But I'm really pleased with the next one, where it says, "Administrators at my school respect my views and opinions." Seventy-five percent, while that may seem low, that means there is a relationship developing between students and administrators at the school. They know who their administrators are. And for three-quarters to say, "I'm respected for that by administration," I think that speaks well for administrators. Naturally, we'd like to see that higher, but where it is, that's good. I'm responsible for my behavior. I am truly responsible, even at the secondary level, as I was at the elementary level. School rules are clearly defined and explained so that I understand them. We see that school rules changes a little bit when we get to the secondary level. Part of that reflects adolescence, because we're taught in adolescence to start trying to understand what rules are, and some of our negotiations sometimes may be appropriate and inappropriate. But the key thing for restorative practice comes at the last statement, when I break a rule, I have an opportunity to make things right. Half of our population, a little over half of our population, believe that they have that opportunity. That gives us some growing room at our secondary level, again, to work on restorative practices. We'll see, after-school participation has remained about the same over the course of the three years, even though we steadily see a slight increase. Again, the service project, a little over half of our population indicates participation. And then, the key thing, particularly, we're looking at the secondary level, if I participate in the service learning project, does it have an impact on me? Because what we're really trying to teach is not nice to do things, but when I do that, what change does it reflect in me? And that's a higher-level skill that we're continuing to work on. We moved to more behavioral directions here, and you'll see, particularly where it says we're disciplined fairly when rules are broken, that will naturally change at the secondary level from elementary. And you'll see particularly, again, that thirty-eight percent bullying harassment is a major problem at my school. It's the only statement that I know has reflected all the way across the different levels at the same level. And then, you'll see, there is a slight decrease, or a decrease in alcohol use being a problem, drug use being a problem, and gang activity involvement at my school is a problem, stays constant for three years. This slide, particularly, we combined the elementary and secondary, trying to see, above all else, we have continued to say, we want our students to feel safe in Cabarrus County, because you read the newspaper a lot of times about others who do not. We feel good about these numbers, and the numbers I think you'll particularly be pleased with would be particularly the ones that relate to riding the bus and bus stop, and I know that's some effort the board has made for a year, trying to make sure the funding was there as we've increased camera use on buses. And when the cameras had just gone into effect was right at the time we did last year's survey, and that was the remark we made then, but we've moved from sixty-seven percent to eighty-six percent at the elementary level, and sixty-eight to eighty-seven percent at the high school level, or secondary level. And the same thing at the bus stop, we've moved from sixty-seven percent to eighty-nine percent, and then seventy to ninety percent at the secondary bus stops. We do not have cameras at bus stops, so we won't say that that's the piece, but the fact that our students feel much safer in riding the bus and at bus stops, we think is a credit a lot to a lot of the direction we've placed in that area. And again, particularly for safety, elementary children talking about feeling safe at schools, and then secondary talking about in the walkways and hallways, for our district, we think these numbers continue to show, overall, safety is not necessarily a factor that's hindering achievement. Bottom line, folks who feel safe, we will make sure it's a better learning environment. So where do we go with what we've seen? Where we're looking for our strategic plan about reporting feeling safe, our range runs anywhere from eighty-five to ninety-seven percent. Fostering a sense of belonging, that I, as a student, belong at my school, eighty-two to ninety-six percent. For restorative practices, we're from fifty-eight to eighty percent, more variability there. And involvement outside the school day is over half of our student population at the secondary level. So that's kind of relating to where we are with the strategic plan. We do have some next steps. We do want to look very hard at the role that student perceptual data needs to take or be a part of in our new strategic plan, because student perceptions are extremely important. But we also want to figure out, how do we increase student participation rate at the secondary level? And then particularly, we do not want to omit K two. Perceptions at kindergarten are important, as well as first and second grade, and we want to determine a better way to be able to bring those perceptions back, and that's where we are with student data.
Board members, comments or questions? I'll start on Mr. Kiger's side.
Thank you, Donna, for all the good information. When you, the number of participants, we got the raw number, what percentage is that?
I did not-
Fifty-three, well, actually, it'd be, what, ten thousand total? Well, that's easy math, right? How many students do we have?
We have twenty, over twenty-eight, but that includes kindergarten through second grade. We've got to go back and give you those numbers. I don't have that on the sheet.
Okay, I guess I was just curious of what size sample we were talking about, and the, two minor comments, and really, these are minor comments. I'm surprised at the, at the high school question of respecting views, I'm surprised that that number's as high as it is. I would think they'd all think nobody cares what they think. I mean, that's just the mentality of that age. So really, I think we're doing a pretty good job even to hit three-quarters of, you know, seventy-five percent. You know, that's, it's not right or wrong, it's just sort of the age of, and trust me, that's another thing I deal with at home, but, so I think we're doing something very, very good there. I'm curious to know what your, identify ways to increase student participation rate at the secondary level. Just on the surface, sixty-five percent seems like a pretty good number, but what's your target number? I mean, you may not have a target, that may not be a fair question, but sixty-five seems like quite a few that are involved outside of the classroom or outside of school, and one of your goals is to increase that, so I just wondered, A, maybe why or what you think the target is or should be.
Our goal initially in the strategic plan is trying to make sure every student had an opportunity to participate in post-after-school activities. While we've been able to do that more with athletics at the secondary level, middle school and high school, as well as also band, and a lot of the choral activities, as well as some clubs, we feel like we've made some progress. At the same time, with sixty-five percent, we were anticipating that we could be higher, but we have had some other glitches to develop. The economic part has affected where we have more students working now and other pieces. So as far as having a ballpark figure to say exactly we wanted this particular number, we would just wanted to continue to make that increasing so that students had opportunities.
The plan to try and increase, is it have more, I mean, athletic teams are set. I mean, there's only a certain amount of teams and a certain amount of roster spots, but, so are you talking about adding clubs and adding activities? Is that the way to increase, or just?
That was one of our tasks, trying to make sure each school is offering comparable activities. One other piece was trying to make sure we had access for there, and I'll use the example of Northwest Middle here. We have had a win team at Northwest Middle that's been very good for a lot of students, but because of transportation costs, our outside benefactor could no longer do that. So the idea that we lost that transportation funding for a while, but then was able to restore it later in the year, this past year, again, from an outside source, and I'd like to recognize communities and schools there, was very, very helpful, because that, again, gave an opportunity for students who could not stay, because geographically, Northwest students are not within walking distance. So it's things like that, we try to make sure we're taking out barriers that prevent those that could and want to be able to participate.
Okay, well, I wish you great success in that, because engaging those students outside of the classroom, I think, is part of what's going to help them make, help make them successful.
Ms. Carpenter?
I'm sorry, I'm at the learn. You hit on the areas that I had kind of noted or put checkmarks by, the participation in physical activity. You know, they should know this, we should be teaching them that, and it should be at a hundred percent, so I would like to see that improved. They should know that. And then, especially since we're paying for that healthy food, again, they should know that. My cafeteria provides healthy food choices, and we are paying to have that, so I would like to see them know that. That's at eighty-four percent. I am taught what foods are healthy to eat, again, at eighty-eight percent, that should be higher. So again, I'd like to see that higher, so we should be teaching them that. And again, and you had mentioned this about the bullying, at the secondary level, at seventeen percent, and then you see the elementary at fifteen percent. And so they're just right there together, and again, as you mentioned, we would like to see that at single, single digits, or at zero. So that's my comment.
Donna, thanks for the information and the data, because you can't improve on anything unless you know where you're at, so that's about all I have to say. I mean, next, when we look at this next year, we'll just hope that all those numbers continue to rise. Yeah, or decrease, right.
Depending upon the nature of the question, okay.
I just wanted to comment on what Blake had said about the kids and involvement, and I don't, you're probably aware Northwest Cabarrus High School started this past school year with, called an advocacy period or something, twenty minutes a day? Because when we did that tour of the older schools, we saw this big chart on the wall, and I asked the principal, what is this for? It went the whole way down the wall, and it was grouping all the kids, and if there were siblings, it was alphabetically across classes, and they each had a teacher advocate, so if they were siblings, they had the same teacher advocate. And that was the time where kids could do a club once a week, so if they were a child who does not have a ride to get before school or after school, they had twenty minutes of some extracurricular during the week. So they could belong to the chess club or to some group that was making posters for events, whatever it was. So I'm curious if you could parcel out the Northwest Cabarrus High School responses on, "I feel a part of my school" activities, there should be high nineties, as opposed to other schools that maybe have not tried that little yet. Donna, do you know, are other schools going to try that? Has it been deemed a success or not, or?
Each school has developed their own model, technically, and how much conversation they've shared with one another, I think they're still at the beginning stages of that, because they wanted to try several different models, but we can certainly investigate.
And I was, I was just impressed that it gave kids who either weren't joiners a chance to belong, and that it was a cross-section of grades, so you were going to have those seniors with the freshmen for twenty minutes a week, or twenty minutes a day, I should say, but that's not a big deal, they were under supervision, so it just seemed like a neat thing to be doing.
I'll make a note of that.
Back to statistics and what they can tell us and what they can't. Not knowing the percentage of students that responded, fill me in on when they fill this out and how they return it to you. Is it in class? Is it expecting them to mail it in? What's the process?
This is an electronic survey. Let's talk about the dates of the survey and how that was loaded and shared at the elementary and secondary level.
Oh, sure. The student surveys were delivered at the elementary, middle, and high school. We loaded them on each school's website. We loaded them on each school's website, and the students were taken to labs to take the surveys. We had them open for about a month. We worked with the TFs and the principals to make sure, in the elementary, it was grades through, three through five. In middle schools and high school, we encouraged all students to take the survey. And timeline for that, we had a little bit of an issue with spring break, and we all in cabinet decided, let's send them home for spring break and have them take the survey in the month of, during the month of May. Made a great activity for after the EOGs, when we're looking for activities, and putting them on the computers and taking that survey.
All right. So it's possible that a lot of, I mean, you made it available, but not mandatory.
That is correct.
So no way to follow up. The point I'm trying to get to is that there will be students who don't respond, and chances are, those are the students who are not involved, who might be the ones who they're bullied, who et cetera, et cetera. I mean, we don't know. And I just wonder, how can you get a more complete response?
It's the accountability piece. Each week, we gave the principals updates on how many students they had in the school and how many students had taken the survey. I will tell you that at the end of it, there were several schools that said, oh my, I did not have my students take it. So you are exactly right. It's the accountability piece. It's only going to work if the adults are making sure the students get in there and take the survey. And it is completely anonymous, I will tell you that, so.
But just to that point, the students were taken as classes, so therefore, it wasn't a student had to take the initiative at home, it didn't have a computer. So a child who was likely to bully or be bullied was equally given the opportunity. There wasn't a have and have not as far as who was able to take it.
Depending upon the teacher taking them to the lab, and, correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Donna, I see another red flag here that I've just got to tackle a little bit on. You know, we can put percentages on things, and percentages tell you one thing, but when you look at the numbers that that percentage represents, like in this particular case on the bullying, I have been, I have bullied at school. Thirty-eight percent of our kids say, I have bullied at school. Well, thirty-eight percent, you know, is a figure, you say, well, what is that? But when you relate that thirty-eight percent to the responses that we had, fifty-three-hundred-and-sixty-six responses, then that means that over sixteen-hundred third, fourth, and fifth grader says, I have bullied at school.
Mr. Schill.
Somebody must cut me off. That's okay, you cut me off, Madam Chair. She cut me off, yours were. But anyway, that's exactly a red flag. You know, where does the seniors and the juniors and all that bullying come from? It comes from the elementary. It works its way on up. And so the way I see it, you know, that really has got to, that's got to come to a head somehow. And I don't really know the right way, but I know, though, that these indicators and this survey here, you know, brings to light things that we need to really recognize as adults, as a board member, and as staff, administrators, everybody, teachers, everybody involved. It needs to be a concerted effort to stop it before it goes any further. Now, if it was the whole school system, you know, and you look at fifteen percent, well, you're looking at twenty-eight thousand kids at fifteen percent. But it's not that, obviously, because they didn't all survey. But when you look at the ones that did survey, it's a staggering number. And I'm really, really, you know, very disappointed in that figure, I really am, I have to admit, because needless to say, bullying affects the way a child learns. It affects the way they feel about themselves. It will tear their integrity, will tear their dignity, and it'll take away from them something that they need to be successful in school. And we have to see that. And these surveys give us that information, but it's up to us to act on it. And so I'm hoping that we'll see some big improvements and a real aggressive effort to control this before too long, because I see it really mushrooming out of control. Thank you.
So I'm going to give you a little bit more homework and another directive, if you will. I don't think the board has ever been told how any type of implementation or training process takes place with bullying policies. Did the teachers do it? Do the children sign off on it? What actually takes place? And you don't have to answer this tonight, but if you can bring that back to us at the retreat.
Okay.
That would be a really good piece of information. How is that actually implemented? You know, starting from staff down, you know, where do they get their information about what bullying is, you know, what the repercussions are, you know, just the whole entire protocol piece of it? Just like our staff's trained on sexual harassment, you know, anything that they're trained on, how do they pass down that training to our children?
Okay.
That would be a really good piece of information.
We can give you that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And if you could, give us a scenario, if you could, what is the procedure? If a, if a student, say, a student comes to a teacher and reports he's been bullied, I'd like to see what is, what happens from that point? If Johnny comes to a teacher and says, Jimmy bullied me today, I'd like to see what happens from that point on, if that takes place. I'd like to see what happens when that happens, what going to take place.
We can certainly provide you that information, because our staff has-
If you could do that, what would happen when that takes place? If there's a form filled out, what that form is? If you could show me what that is? I'd like to see what happens the day that Jimmy comes to say, Johnny did this to me. I'd like to see what our, what steps are going to be taken for when that happens. If you could do that, that'd be great.
Certainly.
I just want to say that we're very concerned about this, and we appreciate the high expectations that we have from our board for students to behave and to not be bullied. But I also want to highlight some work that Ms. Smith did late in the year last year that wouldn't be reflected in any of these surveys. And as we were invited to be a part of Rachel's Challenge, which is an anti-bullying campaign that got started at the end of the year at Central Cabarrus High School, Board Member Farr, and I had opportunity to visit there that night, very pleased with the participation from the community and the staff in that. And we're seeking resources now to continue that program throughout the community. So as part of our remedy to this problem that we're talking about, perhaps we could work together to find some resources to help expand that program across our county. And so thank you for what you're doing there, and we may have found an answer to our problem. And I thank you for searching for that and for bringing that to us.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move into our parent survey results. And just as a reminder, I just want to share with you that the parent survey is our annual survey to garner perceptual data from our parents about a number of issues. A number of topics are covered, everything from the clarity and effectiveness of our communications, to school safety, the benefits of healthy eating, school and teacher expectations, and of course, parent involvement opportunities. The parent survey this year, as Dr. Probst and Ms. Smith all just mentioned to you, was available throughout the month of May. We opened the survey on May 3rd and closed it on June 1st. It was available online on our district website, and paper copies were also available in each school office. We sent out Connect Ed messages and reminders about the survey. We posted information on Channel 21, and also on our district website to invite parent participation in the survey. I'm happy to report that we have parents from every school to participate in the survey this year. However, we did see a significant decrease in the number of parents who responded to this year's survey, and it was actually a forty-seven percent decrease. And we think that there are a number of reasons for that decline in the participation. One of them, we believe, is that the survey was available a little bit later in the year than normal because of the late spring break, and because of our decision as a cabinet to wait until after spring break to survey the parents. We also feel like the survey was also, it was also a decline in the participation, because we didn't have a typical six-week window, which we did last year and the year before. We only had a four-week window. And the reason for that four-week window is because we were anticipating losing the K-12 Insight survey tool as a result of the budget cuts, and knew that we only had our availability and our access to that tool until the end of June, and we needed time to process all the data from the surveys, to get the reports run, and have all that trend data available to us to use going forward. So we closed the survey out in a four-week window rather than a six-week window. However, I'm happy to report that we have been able to work with K-12 Insight, and they're going to work with us to work with pricing, so that we are able to keep the tool, and so next year's survey won't have to happen in such a compressed timeframe. We'll have, we'll have the normal six weeks timeframe that we typically have, and we'll also have the opportunity with the calendar to not have to wait till so late in the year to share that survey with our parents. So what did our parents tell us? Parents said that they know the expectations for their school, of the school and their students' teachers, and they know what their teachers expect of their students. They have a really good understanding of our grading system, and that they believe the school provides them with opportunities for accelerated learning and help for at-risk students. Our parents also shared with us that the schools encourage respect among teachers, students, and parents, that discipline problems are handled appropriately and fairly, and that students have access to technology and extracurricular activities. Basically, a lot of our parent perceptions are mirroring what our students have said in the student survey, and what our staff has said in the staff survey. So it's good to know that those perceptions are in sync. I just want to point out a couple more to you about student safety, or the parents' perceptions of their student's safety. They believe their students are safe at the bus stop and on the bus, and in the cafeteria, and playgrounds, and restrooms, and hallways. So they feel like their students are actually very safe in our schools, and that's a very good thing. They believe that they can voice their input, and that they have opportunities to participate on school improvement teams, and that they have opportunities for other parental involvement activities. Now, if we take a look at specific numbers based on our strategic plan objectives, these are specific questions that were asked, and they relate directly back to objectives in our strategic plan. The first one is Cabarrus County Schools is an effective communicator. You can see that we have made some very small incremental increases over the past three years. We are up to eighty-eight percent of parents believing that we are an effective communicator. Eighty-one percent of our parents feel like we are, we build positive relationships with them and with the community. And that is no change from last year, but a slight increase from the year before that. Eighty-seven percent of our parents believe that our website, the district website, is informative and easy to navigate, and that number rebounded back to the 2009 figure of eighty-seven percent from a one percentage point dip last year. Last year, we attributed the drop to the new design of the website, and folks having a chance to get used to that and learn where everything was, and get acclimated to using it. And now we're seeing that that number is rebounding. So I think that people are getting used to it and have more familiarity with it, and are a little more comfortable with the design. District-wide messages via Connect Ed continue to perform well with our parents. They feel like it's a very informative and valuable tool. And about three-fourths of our parents believe that they receive, they are well-informed about school-related news through the local media that is available to them. So what are our conclusions? Our parents give us high marks for communicating effectively and for building positive relationships with them and with the community. We need to continue to look for ways to enhance those relationships and to involve our parents a little more, and to get more community involvement as well from the community at large. So how are we going to do that? Well, we're first going to evaluate the survey questions and revise and replace the ones that are necessary based on the next version of our strategic plan. We know that there'll be some communication-related objectives in the strategic plan, we just aren't sure at this point what those will be, so we don't know what those questions need to be at this particular point. And then we will continue to use, to look for ways to engage our parents through the parent council, through community events, such as the Cabarrus Family Medicine Back-to-School Splash, which we are participating in next weekend. That is a large community event, and our school, our elementary schools are participating, and several of our district-wide departments, Transportation Kids Plus, Public Relations Department, Child Nutrition, will all be participating in that event. Other district-wide events, such as the strategic planning input sessions that we had back in the spring, and other school-level participation opportunities. So we know that there are other opportunities and other ways out there to engage parents. We've got, you know, twenty-eight thousand students, and at least half of those, half of that number is parents. And so that's, you know, nineteen, twenty thousand people that we could be engaging in other opportunities that we're just not even tapping into yet. But we are going to continue to look for ways to do that.
Okay. Board members' comments or questions? And I'll start on Mr. Schu's side.
Well, actually, I don't have any questions, but I do have just a basic comment about all three of the surveys. I think that this was, is an excellent tool, and I don't know how many years we've been doing this. Obviously, I was out for two years. But it's an excellent tool to tell us where we are, where we need to be, and hopefully will give us some insight on where we're going. And so I appreciate all the effort, and I hope I didn't come down too hard on any one particular person, because I sure didn't mean to, by no means. But I do recognize the bullying part as a serious problem that needs to be dealt with immediately. But other than that, it's a very informative report, and I thank everyone for all their participation in getting it done. Thank you.
I just have a question, Ronnie. Were there any open-ended response questions for parents?
There were opportunities to write in responses if you wanted to add additional comments.
Okay. Did you get any good ideas about this, how to communicate better parental involvement stuff?
We got some ideas, you know, there are lots of people who are leaning more towards social networking sites and wanting to get their information that way. So that is something that we are going to continue to investigate and look into as another form of communication.
Okay.
So, yeah, we did get some ideas that way.
Okay, good, thanks.
I kind of want to ditto what Mr. Schu said, and again, I want to thank everybody that helped put this together. I think the parent numbers are right on target. I think we do need to work a lot more with getting the communication better with the parents. I think the more involvement we can have with that, the better off we're going to be. I think these numbers, though, are right in line. I know, working a lot in the community with different organizations and everything, I kind of hear a lot of the same type thing, that we need to work more on this. And I think that is an area, but again, I want to thank everybody that, you know, worked to do this, and I think the more we can do of this, the better we're going to be. And again, I want to thank staff and everything for what they've done, and I think we just need to keep working on it. And thanks a lot.
Yeah, information is always a key. I would like to see greater, I guess, parental involvement with the survey. I think that, generally speaking, that may just mean that they're typically satisfied. I don't know if that's true or not, but that, it seems like that was a fairly low response.
Very low.
Yeah. So that'd be, that would be a targeted goal to me. And the other thing that I noticed is, we ask a lot of pertinent questions about what's going on at the school and what the parent's perception is, down to discipline and benefits of healthy eating and physical well-being. I would like to see greater, I guess parental involvement with the survey. I think that generally speaking, that may just mean that they're typically satisfied. I, I don't know, I don't know if that's true or not, but that, it seems like that's, that was a fairly low response.
Very low.
Yeah, so that'd be, that would be a targeted goal to me. And the other thing that I noticed is we, we ask a lot of pertinent questions about what's going on at the school and what the parents' perception is, down to discipline and benefits of healthy eating and physical well-being, but I noticed we didn't ask a question about academics and whether the parents think that we're challenging or pushing forward in a truly positive direction academically, and so that, that may be something that, to me, would be a pertinent question to ask on a parental survey.
There is, and, and that was in the first part of the presentation where I talked about understanding the grading system and knowing the teachers' expectations of my student. Slide five. Those types of questions are in that survey.
Okay, terrific.
The first ten questions of the survey are for academics, and one of them is, does my child get challenged at school academically? So, those questions are in there.
Okay, good. Well, if we're going to highlight that where they think we're, we're teaching them the benefits of healthy eating, I'd like to highlight that they think that we're challenging them academically.
Absolutely.
Other than that, and I, I don't mean to end on a negative note-
Oh, no, no, no.
-because this is terrific information, and I appreciate you putting it together.
Well, I'll end it on a positive note then. You know, actually seeing the forty-seven percent decrease in participation, I was surprised to see the numbers even go up a little, so that's great. I mean, I think if we had, you know, more participation out of that group, those numbers might have even been higher, so I was pleased to see that, you know, go up at, at all with that much of a decrease in participation. And, you know, I know that timeframe was probably really not a good timeframe, so I'm glad y'all have recognized that and maybe we'll do that a little bit differently next year.
We, we will, and, and we, I mean, we knew that it would be a challenge going into it, but we, we made the decision to, to delay it until after spring break for several reasons, knowing that that was going to shorten that window.
You know, parents coming back from spring break, getting ready for the end of the school year, graduations, there's so much going on, they're so busy. I'm sure that had a lot to do with it, but I'm thinking the numbers going up at all was, you know, spoke volumes to what's going on, that that may have even been better. So, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we will have tab number five, which is your handout that was at your desk when you arrived, the QSCB project status by Mr. Lynn Wiki.
I need to look at the one I made my notes on, so. We, we've added some information, and this is the same report that you received last month with, with the added colors. Really, and, and it's what, what we're trying to do now as we move forward with these projects is update you with, with detail where budget information changes or where the status of projects change. So, the budget information changes are identified in green blocks, and the status of projects or changes are identified in blue. And so, just starting at the top, a couple of the projects that you're aware of that we have, we have bid and we're now in construction on are the Beverly Hills Elementary School Window Replacements and the Coltrane Web Magnet School Remodeling Work. And in the case of, and the reasons for the change in budget, the case of Beverly Hills, you may recall I explained that we were over on that project bidding and it had to do with the quality of glass required by the Fire Marshal that, that we needed to improve on to meet higher standards for wind resistance. And so, that increased the cost of that project, and we recommended and, and have shown that we, we are using funds from the Coltrane Web Project, which came in lower. And as I was saying that earlier in the day, I realized that, that we're probably missing a column in this report, and that column is sort of what the bids came in at, so you'd sort of know where we were starting on this, and we, I apologize for that, and we will make, we will add another column, so you'll know, you know, where the baseline was, so to speak. But there, the, the project, the Coltrane Web Project came in, and even with one minor change order, we're somewhere around fifty thousand dollars compared to a construction budget of ninety-six thousand, and that was after we actually moved the funds to Beverly Hills. So, we had a very substantial margin of safety on the Coltrane Web Project, which is good because we, we need margins of safety, but we had adequate monies to, to fund the work at Beverly Hills. And in a similar fashion, we're, we're working through, we bid the Performance Learning Center Construction Work, and that project has a construction budget line, as you will see, of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. There was a change in the AE fees because originally we were going to bid the paving work as a separate project, and so we did not have that included in the architect's contract. We, when we decided to try and cover the costs and, excuse me, try and incorporate the work, we had to increase their fee to accommodate the design of, of that work. The downside is, is that the PLC construction, the remodeling work in the building came in quite a bit higher than we anticipated. The bid for that came in at roughly a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and that includes a, a seven thousand dollar cost for escalation to get it done prior to the start of school, and that, that sort of pushed us towards our, our limits, if you will, on the project. And on top of that number is sort of a, another issue where we will be required to do fire alarm improvements in that wing based on a more, more, the most recent review of the drawings by the, by the Fire Marshal. So, we're going to be nudging up against the top of that, that allowable construction number without the paving work. We do have other monies to pay for paving, and I'm going to recommend to the board that we probably use those funds to do the paving work at, at the PLC and at J.N. Freese, and allow us to send them, spend the majority of the project monies for the construction work that is necessary in the building. And that's, I, I wish things were better, but as I think I've mentioned before, we're starting to see that increase in material costs and labor costs, and it's, I think we're going to see a lot more of it in the next few months to, to years ahead. So, though I wish that that story were better, it isn't, and we're, we're going to be seeing, I think, more as we, as we move forward down, down the chain of projects as we bid them. Hence, there's a real effort to bid as much as we can, as quickly as we can, but I'll take you to the next, and by the way, just so you know, we, we do have a contract in place for the construction work. We have a contractor engaged in that, and I hope to know by Wednesday, he was working to get his door frames, a delivery date on those, and by Tuesday or Wednesday of this week, he will know when he will receive those, and that will help him guarantee his completion date on, and I believe it's the twenty-second, I think, yeah, twenty-second of August, so we should be in good shape, given that he gets the right news from his hardware and, and frame people. To drop down, we, we continue to look at projects that we can bid as quickly as possible. We are working on all of the projects in terms of design, so I, I don't, when, when we talked last week, or last month, excuse me, about the highlighted areas, those were the projects we, we believed we needed to bid and could bid this fall. We talked about our October fifteenth deadline date for federal funnies, monies that have to be committed by that, by that date, and we're working towards that, but I, I also want to stress for the people who are listening as well as for the board members that all of the projects are in design at this point. Taking you down, we did bid food service, well, we attempted to bid the food service hood replacements, and unfortunately, we only got one bidder today, and that was, that was disappointing. We're, we have asked the consultant to go back to the other bidders who were at the pre-construction, excuse me, at the pre-bid meeting and, and ask what happened. First indices were they maybe were intimidated a little bit by our, our request to get them done as quickly as possible. There are long lead times on this equipment, so we want to review that. We will go out to bid again. We've asked for some assistance in terms of finding additional bidders, and we'll be looking to, to increase the number of bidders on that project as well. And similarly, on, on the last page or second page, the first IT project we bid, which was for J.N. Freese Middle School, we did get bids in for wiring for the school, but for other packages, the servers and switches and whatnot, we did not get takers on. So, again, we've, we've asked our consultants to go back to those bidders and find out. You know, the timelines certainly are all, always an issue when you sort of say we needed it by this date, but there seems to be, there, there has to be more to it than that because clearly this has not been a, a boom period for bidders. It may be that they anticipate prices, excuse me, moving up, and they're, they're not sure about delivery costs and whatnot, but we're going to find out, and we certainly are going to put those parts of the project back, back to bid as soon as we can, but we, we hope to have better news to report next month on those. Any questions?
All right, board members, comments or questions? I'll start on Mr. Kiger's side.
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
Good.
Well, you know, I would have to be the one. Give me some ideas. You know, time is of the essence.
Yes, ma'am.
How do we get moving across here? This is not good. We, we need to be moving. Where, where are we finding that there's some issues? Is it the design phase? Is it getting it out to bid? Is it the bid response? What's, what's the issue here?
In, in this case, it really was the, the bidders. I mean, we, we had, in, in both cases, we had adequate numbers of people come to the pre-bids. Those are mandatory pre-bids. We did that with a purpose, you know, we wanted to see who we could get that was sort of committed to bidding these, and yet in the final analysis, people just said, you know what? I don't want to do this. That, that's the question. We have to go back and call every one of those people, our consultants do, and say, what went wrong? Why weren't you here? You know, what can we do differently? Because our intention is to get those bids back on the street next week, but we need to find out exactly what it's going to take to entice these people to give us their bids, and so we will do that this week and, and get back out on the street.
And Lynn, I don't want to put you on the spot here. I probably should have looked at this a little closer, but I guess my real question is, are we missing something in, in our timeframe as far as, you know, this is a real stringent timeframe for how we had to follow the federal guidelines with this. Are we missing doing things with, getting things approved, getting the monies? You know, where are we, is our timeframe's good or it's just the response issues?
No, I, I, right now, our timeframes are fine. I mean, you know, one of the things I mentioned that, that sort of misses the first analysis is that you're allowed to count fees as, as part of your, your October fifteenth amount of money, so if you add all those fees up, you're looking at eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, so that's a, you know, if you're, our, our ten percent goal is only one point two, not, not only, but it is one point two million. So, really, we, we, we hope to have Central Cabarrus, the Window Replacement Project, and possibly the offices bid in, in September. There's a lot of fairly good-sized projects we're, we're working. I, I know Todd and his engineers are working diligently to try and get Bogers Fields, the Northwest Fields bid. Those sorts of projects carry major, major dollars with them. We also have a couple of major HVAC projects we plan to bid this year. My, my frustration is that I, I don't want people to think that because we bid something, it's going to happen next week. We don't, we have children in school, many of these projects, I mean, the outdoor things are fine, I mean, those, those go forward, but the things that are involved with the interiors of the school, we simply can't do. We'll get people under contract, we'll have them order the equipment, but then we wait until the Christmas or a, a long holiday weekend or something where we can get into the school and they can do some work, so. But in terms of meeting that October fifteenth deadline, I, I don't think there's any problem whatsoever.
Well, that makes me feel a little bit better. The issue, I, I definitely would love to see a, a bid column.
Yes.
That's important. Also, I want to make sure that if, in the planning process, if we're missing some things there, I know you said the Fire Marshal with some code issues with the, you know, that in the design phase can hold up so much stuff, and materials are going up every day, so that tells me that we're going to have less dollars for less projects by the time we get to the end of it, and I worry about that, so if it's something that, you know, we're doing, I just want to make sure, and I'm, I know you're on top of that, but if there's something that we need to do a little bit differently with the construction committee meeting to figure out, you know, what we need to move along or-
Sure. No, I mean, and we could certainly talk about that in de, more detail.
Great.
I think that, that the crux of, of what, what, the issue right now is that there were delays, as we all know, on the front end of this, and we just, you're now asking contractors to really jump through hoops. I mean, I don't know how many different suppliers this fellow on, I'm talking about PLC, went through to find somebody who could give them an HVAC piece, unit to put on the roof to, to serve the, the survey, server area and the computer areas, because so much of it is just very, very long lead time. You know, typically, even door frames, they're saying, you know what, we don't have any in stock, you know? You, you can buy knock-down frames, but they're not, they're not institutional quality. I mean, that, that's the other difficulty about this. You could take lesser quality, but it's not something I'm recommending, of course, and so we're really, we're, we're finding that there are local vendors who are willing to work with us, and literally what happened with the door frames on this is the fellow who's supplying them said, we'll put your order ahead of everyone else. We're, you know, we're going to do this for you and get it done, so that's the kind of cooperation we're hoping for, but you, you won't get that on every project, on, on every piece of equipment.
I just want to make sure all the parties that are involved, from the county side, you know, to the architects, all of us, that we're all on the same page, that, you know, when you say design, it means lead times, it means what's done today is not done for several months, you know, that we're all making sure that these timeframes are really diligently looked at, you know? I, I just worry a little bit about that, about how this is going to turn out at the end of this, but I know you're working on it. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay.
Oh, yes, Madam Chair, one, thank you. One other thing, because of this rebidding process, and we've talked about this a little bit before, the board did authorize you to sign contracts in between meetings, but I know you're going to be gone for a bit, and I'm wondering if the board would authorize Mr. Fur as, as vice-
I'm home. I came home last night.
Oh, you're, okay, so you'll be here.
I was gone last-
That's fine, because in the, in the next-
Yeah, I'm sure.
Next two weeks, we'll, we hopefully will have some things for you to sign, so. That's great. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mrs. Klutz, tab number six, the 2011-2012 Budget Resolution.
I am happy and relieved to be here today to present this budget resolution. You can't imagine why. I'm so relieved. I started, my staff and myself started working on this budget preparation back in September. We brought you guys and other staff, our budget committee, in in November, December, I think, and we prepared for a two-year budget cycle so that we do not have to go through this process again, and I am, I'm happy to say that as I present this budget resolution to you, we are prepared for this year, eleven, twelve, and we are prepared for the, the jobs bill funding cliff that we anticipate next year, too, unless, and that is with the knowledge that we have right now. So, clearly, things can change, but with what we know right now, we do not anticipate additional budget cuts that, that we will need to make, so we, we're ready unless something, something happens unexpected. So, there's, we've talked a lot about budget over the last year, and I just want to talk about a couple of things that, that may be new that you haven't heard. Dr. Shepherd and Kathy Algren, myself went to a conference last week on Wednesday and Thursday, so if you hear something new, it's because we just, we just heard this, it's brand new. The only budget that I'm concerned about, and, and I'm not very concerned about it, but I just want to let you know that through the year, the, the transportation budget could be impacted. The state funded it at the same level. They funded it this past year, and obviously fuel is at a higher rate, more like three, over three dollars a gallon, and they funded it at more like two dollars a gallon. Normally, the state will give us a, an adjustment for that, but they're finding it difficult to fund in their budget, so sometimes in years past, we've had to fund that locally. That could be a quarter of a million dollars for us. It, it could be up to a half a million dollars for us, depends on what the state's able to fund in their budget and the portion that we have to pay. So, just letting you know in advance that that could come our way. That's the only item in the state budget that I would be concerned about. Some good news, we, the, we received state funding for AIG, and we received more AIG funding than I anticipated, and we are able to hire an additional AIG teacher, and so I've communicated that with staff, so we're able to do that. The capital outlay budget in this budget resolution does not include the, the ninety thousand dollars or up to ninety thousand dollars for the fuel truck. It will come to you next month in a budget amendment. It just was not on the original county allocation sheet, and it will, and it is, is on a revised sheet, and so it didn't get into the budget resolution, and it will come- sheet, and so it didn't get into the budget resolution, and it will come to you in a budget amendment. It was just not included on that original sheet. The other thing, the taping of the board meetings, wanted to let you know that we're, it's costing 1,600 to tape the August meetings, and Dr. Shepherd has graciously agreed to pay for this one. If you would like to continue this service, it would cost $9,000, and we'll need to allocate that cost to continue to do that. So you'll need to let me know if that's what you want to do.
And Kelly, is that an annual cost?
Yes, it would be an annual cost.
And you know, I know that I asked this one time before, but we've probably forgotten it, but we were curious to what we were doing before, what the cost was before.
It was free.
Everything was totally free?
It was free.
And then we did a little analysis, if we would have had to upgrade it, all the Time Warner stuff, and if we would have taken that on, you know, they gave us the stuff, but we would have had it done, the upgrade. Somebody gave us a number, if that was something that you could look at. We were kind of curious. We've had this discussion of whether we want to continue it or not, and the board's going to have to decide if that's where they want to allocate the money, but we need some numbers to work with.
Okay.
What would it have looked like if Time Warner, if we'd had to upgrade all of that technology to make that happen, or any other route we would have went? I know that was brought to us at some point in time, but if you could get that for us, that'd be great.
Okay, sure will. And the other thing that I just wanted to mention to you, it came out in the budget as a surprise to us, was House Bill 720. And you may recall, as, when I brought the biweekly pay schedule to you for our non-exempt staff, and I wanted to stop prepaying our non-exempt staff, I told you that I could not stop prepaying our certified staff, our teachers, because it was required. What I'm going to tell you today is that next year, according to House Bill 720, it will not be required, and I will not be able to prepay certified staff. And so that is going to be a big adjustment for our staff, and I will need to start communicating this and making them aware. So I will start an implementation schedule and plan, a communication plan, so that they're aware of that, and I'll start that immediately, so that they'll have as much advance notice as possible. And that was kind of buried in the budget.
Okay. Some questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I'll start on Mr. Schu's side.
I'm okay with the resolution, Kelly, but as far as doing the televised and all, that's great. Dr. Shepherd did this one, and I think that, you know, in our parent survey that we just talked about, was talking about communication, and I think that the televised meetings will help in that area as far as, you know, getting the message out. I'm assuming it, will it be on like it was before, Channel 22, or is it just going to be for in-school use, or how is that going to be?
We are now planning, and of course, this is all preliminary, first night back in filming, but we're planning to use our website as a distribution point where we can, those that want to see it can come to the website and link to it. Now the specifics, we, you know, we haven't got all the details worked out yet. We're experimenting tonight, and that's what we hope to do. We have not made the decision to put it on Channel 21 as of yet.
Well, that's good, because every time, every, I know before, when we filmed, we filmed and Time Warner carried it and all, it was a good way to get the message out. People were informed, and so whatever we can do in that area, I'm all for it. I know, Ms. Carpenter, you really want to see us come back to that some way. The whole problem in the beginning with this was the money, and if we can somehow find the resources and find the money, I'm all for it.
Well, and let me add that using our website to distribute this video would make it an option for people that don't subscribe to Time Warner Cable. So it's a broader distribution. But we're open to suggestions, any.
I'm glad to see that you're going to be able to get it back on television. It's always surprised me, the number of people who say, I saw you on TV, you know, and I thought, you know, that that's good, that's healthy, and it's good for the community. As far as their budget situation, thank you for not being finished with that by the time I got here.
Just for clarification, the filming is not going to be on television, it'll be on the internet.
Right.
So people won't see it, but I think there's goodness, like you said, to that, because the internet is more broadly available than what people may subscribe to at home, cable or other services, or no services at all. I have a question about the prepaying of teachers. Is that the situation where we pay the whole month of August and then they don't get paid in June? Where that would now go back to the exact or accurate timing?
It's exactly that. Teachers start August 18th, and on August 31st, they're entitled to a full month's pay.
Okay.
And so, and in June, if they were to leave early or don't work those last couple of days, then we have a collection problem, those kinds of things. It's exactly what you just stated.
Okay, so then we will have 11 months to pay certified staff as opposed to 10 months before, because it'll be two parcels, nine fulls.
The details have not been worked out. The way the bill is written right now, there's an error in it. It was going to be effective this year, but because it's stated incorrectly, it was not effective this year. So they're going to, they're going to write it correctly.
Technical correction.
And then we're going to, we're going to make it effective. It's going to be, it actually says effective July 1st, 2012.
Okay.
But they're going to have to correct it. So we believe that it'll still be, we can either make a partial payment on August 31st or we can wait till September 18th and make a full payment. We believe we'll have that option.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Well, you've all known that I've always wanted to see us back on, because communication is a key. I would rather see us televised and the other, because the more you can get the word out, the better you are. Because some people do not have the internet, and some people have the TV. So I think if we need to do both. Personally, of course, I always like pre. I like that better than any, but if you do have to pay, again, I think the communication is vital. Again, on the payroll thing, whatever needs to be worked out, and then again, the sooner you can get it out to the employees to let them know, I think the better off we would be with that. But again, whatever we can get out, but again, I'd like to see it televised, because there are a lot of people that do not have the internet, especially a lot of the older. Still, there's a lot of people that don't use it. So I'd like to see us do both.
On the budget, I don't think there's anything that any of us can do anything about, but the fuel part gives me a little heartburn. If we're only getting reimbursed, at this point, two-thirds of what the current cost is, and that, it doesn't show signs of letting up, that's going to end up coming, it's going to come up again, and we're going to have to do something with it. Well, whatever we're paying, I mean, she referenced the $3 a gallon, but if we don't pay that much, you know, hopefully not, that's great, but whatever it is, if we're not, those prices aren't coming down anytime soon, probably not, and that's going to come up, but it'd have to be something we deal with.
Okay, so for the 15th, can you bring back to us as far as what the cost would be as far as televising, that whole scenario, that table, and do we need to make that decision in this part of the budget?
Let me clarify. Do you want the cost that we brought to you in previously, or do you want a new updated cost?
I think, well, definitely, I think updated, but I think the options, we were given a table, you know, if we went this way, this way, and this way, it would cost this much, this much, this much. And I'm hearing board members say, yes, internet, yes, television, yes to both, yes to everything. And, you know, it is important. We have actually had probably more statements made to us about us not being televised and people not getting all the information. And poor Jessica, she can't write every single solitary word that every board member says up here and get it in the paper. So, you know, sometimes when they hear the rest of their story, they'll say, well, you know, we didn't hear that, you're not on television anymore. So it's really important. I think the board has placed that as a priority, so if you, as much information as you can give us, which route, how much it's going to cost, and when we can start implementing it. But you're saying, as far as, go ahead.
Yeah, it does not have to be a part of the budget resolution. You can go ahead and adopt the budget resolution, and you can appropriate fund balance, or we can pull it from somewhere else at any point.
Okay, so right now, board members, what's your pleasure? Is this a consent agenda item for that night or an action item?
Consent.
Is everyone good for consent? I'm getting a shake from the head. Mr. Krieger? Okay. Consent agenda it is.
I'm really relieved now.
I know you are. Thank you. Okay, since we have tabled tab number seven to the August 15th business meeting, we're going to replace that with Dr. Colleen Sane regarding the calendar issue.
I'd like to thank you for your patience in this calendar work. It looks like it should be very simple. It's not. And that being said, I will tell you, we found one more mistake. Let me go back just for a minute. I want to thank Mary Ann Bish publicly for finding the first mistake, which is that the public, that the elections will be held on May the 8th and not May the 1st. So that has been changed. And then Ronnie Boone found that if you look down through the August, February, March, April, May, that that one should be changed to an 8.
Calling before us, tell us, you know, what we've got. So what we have is the corrected version?
If you'll change that 1 to an 8, we have the corrected version.
And you're speaking about May?
I'm speaking about May.
It already says the 8th.
Okay.
The words in the middle.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let me just clarify for the board.
Thank you.
In the middle, where it's actually verbalized, not on the calendar day, it should say 8th for Planning Staff Development Day.
That would be correct.
Okay, and is that the only noted correction?
That is.
Okay, board members, comments or questions? And I'll begin on Mr. Schu's side if you have any issues.
I'm okay with the budget.
Okay, Ms. Minat? Ms. Thornton-Ball?
I just have a question about, there's, the first two workdays are marked as capped. I thought we didn't have capped anymore.
The, we do have capped workdays. The 19th is capped for Common Core, and the first workday is usually the first day back for principals to introduce to their staffs, but I'll have to look at the 18th.
Okay, so capped is...
Definitely the 19th.
Okay, no, I, okay. So just those two? I just thought the last discussion was we were, those weren't going to be there anymore, or they weren't, they were taken out of the legislation or something?
Protected workdays were taken out.
Protected, okay. So there's no protected ones anymore?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay, what is the board's pleasure for this change to be added to the consent agenda or an action item? Consent, I'm hearing consent? Good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we will move to tab number eight, Approval of the Interagency Agreement for Collaborative Technology Services. Dr. Kelly Probst.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to ask Michael Starks, our lead engineer, to just be on standby. I don't want to have to have you stand up the whole time through this, but I'm going to get through talking about the document, if you'll come on up here. For our viewing audience, I'd like you to know that the idea of collaborating with three government agencies, Conneplis City School IT, Cabarrus County IT, and the county government, is one that we've been working on in terms of, is it even possible with the technology, with our infrastructure, to be able to offer some blended services? What I'm going to present to you tonight is a proposal to begin working on some initiatives, and then in later tabs, we'll start talking about some of those projects. The idea is a rather simple one. Instead of government agencies buying things three times, let's buy it once and let's share it. The idea, let's take a filtering appliance. Ours costs around $90,000. So if each government agency had $100,000 purchase, and we can go together and buy just one, that would save us $200,000. And could we take that money and put it back into the schools and buy some of the hardware and extend the technologies that we offer to our students and staff? That's easy. That's an easy concept. What becomes more difficult is, well, the filtering appliance that we have in our settings is far stricter when we're dealing with children and what we can let in and out on the internet versus what happens with government employees that are dealing with adults. So our primary mission with the three agencies over the last couple of months is, is it even possible that we can work out all of these things and propose working together? So I'm going to walk you through an interagency agreement. I'm going to not talk about the fiscal impact until we get to the end of the document. So if you'll turn with me to page, I'm going to start actually on the document on page four, you'll see three colors of font. The dark black font is the original document that was presented to the commissioners and then shared with us. The red font was an addition that came in from John Day, the county manager, on July 6th. And then the blue font are the suggestions that we have being prepared from inside Cabarrus County Schools, coming to you with things that we'd like to see added on the interagency agreement. I will not talk about the little one-word additions, but I'm going to talk primarily about the major concepts that are added. So let's start with Article II, the purpose. The one thing that the county added was that they would like to see a review of member agencies of IT purchases and services. We certainly agree that we should have a review of IT purchases and services, but we added the blue that says applicable and commonly related. So if it's a project that we're sharing together, definitely, we believe that we should review those purchases. But let's suppose that Mary Ann Bish has gotten some federal money, and she's going to do an iPod initiative at a school. That's something certainly not related to one of our projects and would not be under scrutiny by the county or our team. If we look at the definitions, what do we mean by technology standards? At the bottom, 3.6, we need to agree upon all participants, the definitions for operation document management, and those things that are common, applicable and commonly related. So that would be something with each project, we would have to determine what would be reviewed. And as we move through the actual schedules of some suggested projects, you'll see that we do that. We felt like we needed a definition for hardware, software, and related interfaces, and we put those up there in blue, simply with the infrastructure level hardware and system-level software. If you move down to 4.2, we felt it was really important that there be notification. If the partnership with the county, and the county is basically the provider, would deem it necessary to stop the partnership, we wanted to make sure that there was a notice given to Cabarrus County Schools, and we put a timeline in there so that we would have time prior to the budget year to be able to make some additions and changes that we might have to make on our end. If you turn to the next page, the top of 4.5, one of the things that we wanted to put in was if the county deems it necessary to stop the relationship, what happens to all the hardware, software that we have moved over to the county? How do we make sure that we get it back to protect our schools? And what we've put in there is a line that says, "The provider shall pay the cost of the replacement service. All equipment shall be returned to the participant who transferred it." And we thought that was a way to protect our investments and make sure that we got those back. If you look at 5.3, it was really important to our committee that we added this statement when it talks about services and software and duties, that we add, "In accordance with the applicable laws and policies governing the subscriber." A simple one, as I talked to you about filtering at the very beginning of this. In the school system, we have to, we have to be SIPA compliant, which is the Child Internet Protection Act. If you are a government agency with adults, I don't believe you have to be SIPA compliant. So we would have to make sure that our filtering, if we merged together, it was SIPA compliant. At the bottom of the page, you see some other additions that we've put in there. One of the things we wanted to make sure was if we transfer, let's say we move our SAN, our large server, over to the county, whose insurance will cover it? Once it leaves our property and is housed down at the county level, we need to make sure that there was something in there to protect our equipment. On 5.7, again, this is just another comment that we wanted to add. When doing work under this agreement, each participant and its employees, agents, and contractors will follow the laws and policies applicable to each participant. For example, we might have specific requirements for our employees and our workers that might be different than what the county employees have. So we wanted to make sure that everyone understood the nature of everyone else's business and the sensitivity and confidentiality regarded around data sets and so forth would be followed. On 5.8, we wanted to make sure that this agreement excludes purchases from different types of funds... types of funds that are not necessarily locally funded. And let me give you an example. And let's, we'll talk about E-Rate. We, Cabarrus County Schools does not, we do not apply for E-Rate funding on servers. It, it's a, at this time, we just choose not to do that. We only have two schools that would be eligible. If we did, we could not move those servers from those school sites. Under E-Rate, it says they have to stay at those schools. So we wanted to make sure that where we have laws to follow regarding purchasing, it would not, there wouldn't be a conflict of interest. No work will commence on any schedule, this is 5.9, under this agreement until the designated representatives of each participant have approved the scope of work and the schedule of work. Basically, what it says is, when we have projects, we come back to you, or we come back to Ms. Blackwolder if she deems that it goes back to the board, and we must seek approval from you before we would begin a set project. And those are the additions that we are recommending to this IIA, this interagency agreement. So at this time, I'm going to have Michael come up here. The only closing thing I wanted to say regarding this was, it's not a new concept, that government agencies would work together. I think yesterday, all of us were glued to the TV, watching the news, and, and hearing the challenge before us to, to, to work using taxpayer money more efficiently, to stretch those dollars. I think this is certainly a recommendation that we could support with that motive. What's different for us in the school system is we have 41 sites. Kannapolis has eight, the county has, I believe, three or four. I'm not sure exactly on that number. But we have to be really, really careful regarding what our lawyers suggest in, in moving forward on this. The other thing is people all across the state are watching us because this is something new. I will tell you that in today's IT meeting, we have people from all over the state that want to come down and talk to us, the three agencies regarding this. MCNC, we have Barry Pace from DPI who wants to come down. We've got Ed Chase from, I've already said that, DPI. Dave Ferris from MCNC, and Phil Emmer from the Friday Institute. We also have Shannon Tufts at the government, Chapel Hills Government School. All of them want to come in and make sure that since this is one of the very first things that's happening in the state with agency, perhaps IT agencies working together, to make sure we get it right. And I, I felt that that was a good move today, that there's so many people interested in giving us support and advice. Okay.
Do you want us to discuss the IIA before you move on to the schedules?
I think so.
That would be better.
I think so.
I think that would be easier for the board members. I just actually have one comment before I open it up to the floor. I know with IIA's, this has to be between two boards, and the signature page calls for me, but it doesn't call for Chairman White. It calls for the county manager. And I'm thinking that has to be between the board's chairs when it comes to IIA.
Again, that was submitted by the county, and I do believe at that meeting, I was present, that the chair deferred the power over to John Day, but we can certainly send this back to them and request.
I was thinking that IIA was a legal document between boards, but I, I'll defer to the attorney. I guess if they, they have their own attorney, if he's good with it, I guess it's okay.
I mean, it certainly is an agreement between the two boards. If they want to authorize John to sign it on their behalf, as long as the board votes on it, I'm not, I think that would be okay. And it sounds like that's what, the way they propose handling it. And it's potentially more significant. It's my understanding that they would plan to have him sign individual schedules on behalf of the county. That may be different than how we want to handle it. But I do, you're right. The, the agreement is between the two boards. They're the legal entities, and that is, that is recited at the cover page. It's between the county. It's not, it's not with the county manager. It is the actual agreement between this board and the Board of County Commission.
So if we made no additional corrections to this, that signature page would be correct right now as it stands?
I think it'd be okay as long as they, they vote on it and authorize him to sign it.
Yeah. Okay. I will start the discussion, and I will begin on Mr. Cogger's side.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I, I certainly hope that it, that it works out as, as well as it's intended. It certainly appears that it's a step in the right direction for both, both groups to sort of reach across and figure out a better way to do more with less, which is what we've been asking our schools to do quite a bit of. So in, in that regard, I hope it works. You know, going in, you're going to lose a little bit of autonomy, that there's certain things that I'm sure that we do, that we want to do a specific way, that then may, may or may not be able to do it that specific way. But the one thing that I wanted to make sure was, just looking at, at the out, as long as both parties go in, hoping to make sure that it works for both parties and everybody has an out, in case it doesn't work, then that's really the best way that you can set it up. And I'll leave the nitpicking details to a little further down the line. But that's the one thing that, that I was.
That's scary. She smiled.
And I meant nitpicking in a loving way. But the, the, the out was kind of what I was looking for, and I think you've addressed that. And again, that would be then up to the attorneys to make sure it's followed correctly.
I couldn't have said it better. Uh, no, well, the out is, is the one thing, but we are trying to do more with less. And I think that, and when we all can work together, it, it's funny when you don't have money, how you come together. And that's, that's what it is. And, and when, and, and you said it very well, Kelly. Why buy three of something when you can do it with one? And, and that's what you're basically trying to do. And, and that's, that's what I think is, is great, when we all can work together to get that accomplished. And my, my only question, I think I've, I've come, and I'm sure our, our expert here, which we always look to, to, gee, I forgot her name, this, these moments. Do what?
Mark.
No, not Mark. Cindy, Cindy. Uh, no, not Mark. No, when, when it comes to DP, you know, we always, the E-Rate, I think that's been one of our concerns, what, and I'm sure you're going to ask that question.
I'm leaving her to laugh.
Okay, so I'll let Cindy ask it. That was my only concern, how it's going to affect us if, you know, we would lose some of that, that funding. That would be my only concern. And I'm sure Cindy's going to ask that question, so I'll just leave that to her. Because I, I think that's been our only concern, if that would affect our, us losing funding with that. So that's my only concern I would have. So as long as we've got an out, as long as we are going to be able to have what we need and everybody work together, I'm good with it.
May I just address the internet, the E-Rate question? Currently, we file for E-Rate on four things. Internet connectivity, cell phones, we have about 800 of those, landlines, and then this year, for the first time, we're filing for E-Rate on student email accounts, 3 through 8. None of those would be affected. We'd still be able to file for E-Rate and get our 60% return.
Okay. Now, you know, during these economic times, it, it makes everyone a little creative in the way they do business. And for the entire county, the taxpayers, I think this is a great thing. Looking forward to it. And the thing that was encouraging is the amount of people you said contacted you with the resources and, and the offer of support, that they're going to make sure we do this thing right. And that, that makes it, makes it a little easier.
I will say that the county's networking ability and, and the people that they know across the state, as well as Ms. Furtinball's contacts, it is amazing to me how much the attention that we're starting to get because they want us, they're invest, they want us to do it right. Because if we do it right, then we will become a model for other districts across the state. There are other districts and counties talking about it. So I'm kind of encouraged that we're getting so much support.
Having served on both boards, I understand that on, that there's an ebb and flow to relationships between school boards and commissioners. And so I think the protections that you have added to this are very worthy of being there for both entities. Everybody understands where the other one's coming from, and I think that's good. I'm delighted to hear that you have so many people up from other areas wanting to come and help. So do you have plans for review, let's say in six months, calling in some, not just local folks, but some of these people that have shown this interest to see how things are going? Or, you know, will there be periodic reviews of this project?
We've had phone conversations with all the people mentioned. They have expressed that they'd like to come in the next couple of weeks and actually meet with all three agencies. We have, we call ourselves GovEd. Don't laugh, we're not real creative that way. The government employees and the education employees. But the GovEd meets every Monday at 2:00. They're interested in coming to those meetings, listening, providing advice. And I certainly think that we should take a suggestion back to them, is would you be interested in coming back and providing benchmarks for us, looking at the data, telling us how we're doing? I think that's a great idea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to be redundant because what everybody else said, I concur with. I think it's a very positive move and a, in a very good direction. And I don't know of anything, you know, maybe we might hear something tonight from Ms. Furtinball that would be in an adverse way, but I, I don't know of anything myself. But what I've read and what I've seen, I think it's very proactive and will save some money. And if ever district in North Carolina did this, it would be way up in the millions, there's no doubt. So I'm happy with what we're doing.
And so that I can explain to the viewing audience and to those of you here that do not understand, Ms. Furtinball happens to be our technology liaison. So she's a huge part of the committee that actually met to devise this document and overlook it with what came down from the county. And I think there were some really good takeaways, and our board attorney worked on it. I think there's some really good things in it. The collaborative effort here, I think is just phenomenal. It'll be, it will be a good move. We just have to move very slowly to make sure it works for both sides. Ms. Furtinball, it is your turn.
I'm chomping over the bit here. I guess first, I want, want to offer, doing joint agreements is something I've done for 32 years professionally. And I actually happen to be revising a contract right now at work. So that's all I've been doing is reading legal documents recently. But between, I'll say, my work experience in technology and this type of venture, and also the last eight, nine years being involved at the state level from the Beta Commission and E-Learning Commission, I did talk to some of my contacts at the state about this to make sure, like you said, we were progressing slowly and doing this right. To that end, Kelly has already mentioned Phil Emmer. Phil has offered to come and have a joint meeting to make sure that, he would come here locally. And I've asked him today, I didn't get a reply yet back from him, but to do that no later than next Tuesday, so that we have updates. Our next meeting, our approval meeting, is not for two more weeks. We have a break here in August.
Jackson's there. Are you still having your collaborative meetings on Mondays?
We stopped for two weeks, and we started again on July 25th. So we've had two since.
So will next Monday be an option if next Tuesday?
This is at their discretion. They are state-level resources.
But I'm saying, if he's saying no later than Tuesday, would Monday?
I'm saying no later than Tuesday.
Okay, so you're going to leave it up to him?
Kelly, you can, I can send you Phil's contact information. You can contact him directly.
Okay.
But I want to make sure, both from the agreement standpoint, and from E-Rate, from state funding, just from all of the different aspects. These are folks who are involved with DPI. MCNC is a more broad-reaching state agency. DPI is our side of the business, you know, not the county's side. So we need to make sure that any of these discussions that are occurring with DPI, with the Friday Institute, with MCNC, are always together. And I guess I would, you know, share that with the county staff who's here as well, that not to be having the side discussions here and the side discussions there, but they truly need to be joint meetings because they will be independent in advising how to do this to save the money and, and gain the benefits, but not hurting anything. So for example, the North Carolina K-12 Education Cloud Initiative, how does that impact? It doesn't make sense for us to move servers physically into the county's data center and use their storage and give them reason to buy more equipment if we're going to be using the cloud for some of those functions. So we need to know, you know, for them to look at and say, this makes sense to do this now, it makes sense to only proceed with 50% of your plan on this particular project. What they can and, and, you know, what doesn't does not make sense. So like I said, if you can talk with Phil, the, the real unusual thing about this agreement is, and Kelly kind of hit it with saying, we have 41 sites, we have a bigger technology budget, the county happens to have more staff, but, you know, in a better facility, but we have more technology services we provide of the three agencies, Kannapolis City Schools, Cabarrus County Schools, and the county, we have the most. Normally, you don't have a smaller entity providing services to a larger entity. That's kind of unusual. And so it's a little bit of a David Goliath in reverse, you know? So want to make sure that meeting happens. As a clarification on E-Rate, Kelly mentioned there are quotas on what you can file for E-Rate, we're at about the 60% level. We have to be careful because servers are file-able for E-Rate. We just don't do that because we have enough other, other expenses to meet our quota. So if we turn over all the servers, and the county is running them, and something changes with the FCC regulations in E-Rate, and that happens to be a mechanism that the federal government pushes down additional funding, then all of a sudden, we have lost that opportunity. So we have to be very careful. We tried to, with, when Mark met with us and all, we tried to make sure that wording was okay in the agreement, that, like Grace said, we protect ourselves. I want to clarify, I guess, just for the, you know, any, the public who's, might be viewing this as well, that there are economies of scale with doing this. It's not a three to one necessarily. It is, there might be some certain elements, but for example, if you have enterprise-level servers that are running your antivirus for all your workstations and your servers, yes, you might be able to consolidate on one or two enterprise servers instead of three enterprise servers, but you still have licensing for every one of those entities. You don't reduce your legal requirements as far as your licensing for your hardware and software. You addressed my question about the, the internet filtering, to make sure there were going to be different levels, because we would certainly be different than. I think in the agreement, I mean, we had gone through that in excruciating detail for several hours. The only thing that I wanted to, I guess, tweak some wording on is on 4.3 on page five, when it talks about prohibited by or rendered illegal by any federal and/or state and North Carolina law regulation. Mark, I wasn't sure if we needed to address, because E-Rate in particular is federal, it's FCC, if we need to make that capital F federal, for one thing, because it is a formality, and we're talking about laws of the US government. But also, if we needed to say anything else there regarding, it's not necessarily illegal to not file a server for E-Rate, but if we come up, if that becomes something that we can increase what we file, and that increase in ability to file has happened over the years, if we can file other things than, and, and we say we need to terminate this agreement because it is more financially benefit, beneficial for us and the county to be managing those servers ourselves, or perhaps we partake and we decide it's better for us to buy cloud services from some other provider in order to file for E-Rate, so.
My thought on E-Rate would probably be that that would be a more, that'd be a 4.2. If we decide that because we can no longer meet the 60% through other means, we need to start claiming E-Rate, that that would be a termination you would do prior to the term as opposed to an immediate shift. Because that's really, it would be a change. I, I don't know, I, I do think we need a provision in case something else in the law changes. I agree with capitalizing federal, but I'm not sure I'd try to spell out E-Rate in 4.3.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. But you're right, we could, we can cover that under the 90-day notice in 4.2. Because that, that has been fluid over the years. And just as information to the board, the number I heard today was that the state of North Carolina has been beneficiary of just over $1 billion in E-Rate reimbursements to this point. And if we did not have that ability to get $1 billion, you know, collectively across the state, those expenses in large part would be pushed down to local governments. And so we, we have to preserve that. We might be thinking over Carolina, but we've got to preserve that ability. So, okay, that's all for this section, and then I have some things on the schedules.
Okay. So what I'm hearing you say, the only clarification that we need is in 4.2, or excuse me, 4.3, federal needs to be capitalized. And the signature pages, as far as you're concerned, that's on their side, they can deal with that, no issues there. Okay. And you're going to discuss with Phil if he can come and meet with all parties?
I will try to get that arranged for next Monday.
Okay. All right, I'm going to place this portion of the IIA on the action. All right, I'm going to place this portion of the IAA on the action agenda, and we will move on to the schedules.
Okay. All right, so, if the IAA is approved between the county and Cabarrus, what would be our first project? Our first project is, first of all, moving our SAN server to the county location. And basically, the county has a state-of-the-art data center and we do not. And the idea of, originally, we were going to build a technology accountability building back behind the Ed Center. I think in the 15-year plan, that keeps going down and down the list and we all understand the reasons for that. So, the issue is who has the better data facility, and it's obviously the county. The physical move would not take us too long. We're estimating no longer than 72 hours. We think we can do it in less than 24. We'd start at 10:00 at night on a Friday night and together, both their employees and ours, we would physically move the equipment over to the county site. The county would provide all of the things that are listed, fire protection, physical security, monitored environment, cooling, generators, power outlets, so forth, rack space. They've always been over to measure how much rack space they would need. The servers, the routers, switches, firewall, content builders, VPN, packet tier, those things would be things we'd move and they would make sure we had enough rack space for those. About the only fiscal impact we have is that I'm going to owe a lot of employees that work Friday night into Saturday morning some overtime or some comp time, depending upon how they're paid. So, questions about this first project? We're estimating that if this is approved, we probably would not get to this till about October, maybe the end of October.
So, schedule number one, comments or questions? Now, I'll start on Mr. Shu's side.
Kelly, where is the physical location for the county's?
If it's all right with you because of security reasons, I'll just say the county has two physical sites. It's one of those that we, you know, people with their data centers sometimes don't like to have those published for security reasons. I'll tell you in secret after the meeting.
Okay. Maybe that explains why it's not in here nowhere.
It is, that's why it wasn't.
See, we got ours, we got ours in here.
Yes, and I think everybody knows where ours is. And now that I've said it's a secret, it's just one of those things that we don't publish in documents. And you would understand with all the threats towards cyber, I don't want to say cyberbullying, I'm back on Donna's topic.
Well, I guess we missed that one since we put ours in here.
Well, it'll be gone. I'll just speak for the rest of y'all. Okay, Kelly, on a couple more things I thought about, and like I said, this was dangerous for me reading this again after I had just spent three days reading contracts, but there needs to be, and this is, these are pretty much common things to all the schedules, not just this project, okay? Okay. There needs to be some kind of a due diligence clause that based on the completion of due diligence, either party may give notice that this is not going to be a good idea. So, whatever that formal wording is, Mark.
Is there a timeframe that's typical?
I would say honestly, within five business days or something. It's very short because usually, once you do discovery, and depending on the size of the environment, but ours is not that big and it's pretty self-contained and you're going to a self-contained one place and that sort of thing, you're not spreading out or remapping.
Related to the specific project? Because once you get into a project and you have the best plan, but you get in there and you find, okay.
Exactly, yeah. So, and to that end, there needs to be some kind of a, more of a roles and responsibilities. It says provider responsibilities, but it doesn't, it doesn't list things, it lists the technical type things. It needs to list who's managing, who's creating the project plan, who's managing it. I imagine it's going to be a collaborative project plan, but there's got to be one person who's in charge.
I will say, I was very pleased with the county about a month ago, they, we have a project manager, and I'm trying to remember his name.
Nick.
Nick Roberts. And he's unbelievable with his project management plan. So, it's kind of a separate person that steps outside all three agencies and helps coordinate the activities.
And he's our employee or who's?
He's the county's. But I will tell you that we're present at all the meetings and we are giving feedback with every section discussed.
Okay. Well, that comes into standard project management techniques where there's stakeholders, which are obviously us, Kannapolis and the county, for this first project, just us and the county. But, you know, to define, I'd like to see a little more of that in these schedules so it's very clear. And then that helps when you get, when you actually do your due diligence and you make sure all that the i's and t's are crossed, that there are fewer surprises possible. You know, so, for example, they came over and saw our equipment already, did basic measurements, counts, already questions about bandwidth, I'm sure, and IP readdressing and those sorts of things. There probably should be in here some relative statement of approximate equipment. So, for example, when we looked at this the first time, remember it said all servers? Well, we're not moving all servers, we're moving a defined quantity located at a certain site. So, you should probably put estimated, you know, quantities, possibly what OSs are involved, just some base, not the whole inventory, but some basic elements. What is the test scenario? There needs to be some test before you get to that weekend. It alludes to testing, but it just needs to say kind of who's the owner, again, those high-level responsibilities. I didn't see it quickly, I thought I saw it in one of these documents on another day, that we retain ownership of our equipment. Does it say that somewhere?
It does not. In the IAA, it says that, the only thing we have in there is that the equipment gets moved and their insurance covers it, but we do not have a direct statement that states that this equipment still is the property of Cabarrus County Schools.
Yeah, and I think it needs to because, you know, in the scenario, you have an equipment failure at Robinson High School. And Michael says, you know, I can squeeze capacity in the data center, I've got to move that server because I can't not give Robinson what they need. So, it's his discretion at that point to move it. We need to make sure that it remains our equipment, that if we need to juggle or we have the ability to replace and we selectively want to replace things, it's still our equipment to do so. The, down under performance expectations, it says, it implies to me that the staff has 24x7 access to the data center only for the length of the project. I think we need to make sure that's ongoing.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
We took that away from the IAA and put it at the individual schedules. Would you like that back in the IAA where it says ongoing?
I think it probably needs to be.
Where did you take that out of, Kelly?
When we met, I believe the other day, that we had the 24/7, but moved it to the individual schedules.
Well, you know why? Because we wanted to be careful not to address just the data center.
I think the concern was, you may decide to do other technology things that are not data center-related under the IAA, and 24/7 access may not make sense if you're doing some other shit, you know, some other service that they're providing.
Can we say, can we put something back in the IAA that says when applicable or for data center activities? You know, the?
We could.
Participants will have 24x7 access or whatever.
Okay.
And maybe something just under that.
I just want to hold discussion for a moment. Mark, does that make sense to you or does that pertain specifically to a schedule?
I think you could do it either way. I mean, the, to me, it's most logical in the schedule. If you're talking about the data center move, one of the provisions of moving it is that we'll have 24/7 access. But I don't have a problem with saying where applicable, you know, you get 24/7 in the IAA if we want it there as well as additional clarity that the part, and we may be that in terms of 24/7 access to equipment that's owned by whoever the, you know, whoever's providing the equipment. In other words, you can always access it.
Do you have a place where you would like to place it or?
Suggestion?
Sure.
Okay. I'll just suggest, if we, if we leave it on the schedule, that under performance expectations, we change it to the CCS IT staff will have ongoing 24/7 access to the CCS environment in the data center, as agreed upon and approved by the IT Director and Assistant Superintendent. This access will continue throughout the life of this implementation, or, what do we say, Michael? Throughout the life of the environment?
Yeah, I mean, as long as our network is over there, as long as the agreement's intact, we would need that access.
Throughout the duration of the project or the schedule?
Yeah, see, that's what, it implies it's only for the duration of the project. That's what I want to get away from, so that it doesn't become a business day thing and we get stuck.
For so long as the CCS servers are located at the Cabarrus data center?
That's fine. If we say CCS environment, because it won't be just servers.
I don't know about that because theoretically, this agreement could go years down the road in which case those servers will be dead and gone and the county would be providing the replacement servers for it. That's one of the benefits of the agreement in the first place. I mean, really, I think.
But you still need to maintain, even if they're, if they provide the servers, you still have to maintain them.
We still add, right, but if you add in, as long as the CCS servers are in there.
No, that's what I'm saying, if, for so long as the CCS environment
Okay.
is located, that means any and all equipments, including our databases and so on.
Okay.
Okay. And the last, or actually, under provider responsibilities, it says rack with adequate space. Will the county rack or will you guys rack?
Together. I mean, they're going to provide the actual rack, but.
Okay. So, that's just meant to be the physical rack?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And then the last thing on the maintenance schedule, and Kelly, we had tweaked this, but I think I need one more tweak on it. It says non-critical maintenance performed after business hours between 8:00 and 6:00 on weekdays, but anytime on the weekend or non-school days. Because non-school days, we still have administrative staff working, we can't shut them down. So, when you think about the big picture maintenance calendar.
I did change that. I added a non-school days for staff, for students and staff. I'm so sorry, I must have submitted a different draft, for students and staff. That way, it would be only when no one is at work.
Okay. That's fine.
Cover all the schedules or is that just the first one?
Let me see if I had any separate comments. I mean, most of those were common across, they weren't so much specific to the actual element. Do you want me to address the one under, the storage one? There's only one comment there.
Do you want me to go over what the separate second project is?
All the board members were given instructions to read these and if they had any comments or questions, to bring them tonight, so everybody should be okay.
All right. Okay. So, on, Kelly, on the storage one, under the service description? Project Schedule 2 and the first page of it, where it says service description paragraph? Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay. The second, second paragraph under that title, it says terabytes of space allocated for CCS will be reviewed at the beginning of each fiscal year. I would like to say prior to the beginning because of budget reasons. If we have to allocate some money from our budget, we can't do it after, we're done for the next 12 months.
Okay.
So, and that's the only change there, other than, Kelly, the common things, the maintenance schedule, the due diligence, those things that were common. Right. And for any template in future.
Common throughout 1, 2, and 3.
Correct.
Schedules, okay. And everything else you're good with?
Yep.
Okay.
And then on the third, one more schedule.
Okay, that's what I was asking you about.
Yeah, on the second, that's all I had on the second. But on Schedule 3, this was for the disaster recovery. On the first page of Schedule 3 under service description, it says all three agencies must merge networks. Is a full network merge required?
It depends whether you want disaster recovery or you want disaster recovery with high availability.
Okay, I want MCNC's detailed comments on that one. Because of us using the cloud and the ability to use that, I don't want to, this is a case where I don't want to cut us out of the ability to use state resources that aren't going to be directly budgeted to us, but we have the ability to use them. And if we merge the networks and there's, somehow we can't isolate the education work from the other work, we could reduce our abilities.
While we're actually merging the networks physically, logically, they're still going to be VLANed out separately so that we're, we're, all of our traffic is segregated away from their traffic and the Kannapolis traffic. However, for the redundant site, not only do we have availability to our data, we're going to have a redundant internet connection too. In order for us to be able to switch all the traffic that right now is routing through my office to their secondary site, it's got to go through their network.
Okay.
I mean, physically has to go through their router.
Yeah, but this, this went to me, and it is the third one down the road, the other things have to happen first.
Yeah.
But I really want MCNC's
Okay.
judgment on if they think we're protected for E-Rate and also being able to use state resources.
Right.
So, okay, that's all.
Mr. Farr? Comments or questions? Ms. Carpenter? Ms. Carpenter? Mr. Keiger?
Yes, just, just, I guess briefly, this is a very large undertaking that we hope has very positive results. In any project of this size, obviously, there's things that we know that we don't know. I mean, there's things out there, the known unknowns. Well, there's also things, the unknown unknowns, things that we hadn't, we don't even know we don't know yet until we get involved with it. And so, before, I guess before I vote for this to say, yep, let's move forward, I guess I'd just like to hear, and this is a broad-based question, but are you absolutely confident that you guys have done all of the due diligence enough to put something of this size and stature together, that on the Monday morning after the weekend that we do all of this, that the, nobody will notice any different except for the people that know that we have moved servers around?
Well, let's say 90% sure. I'm very confident with the IAA and I'm very confident that the three agencies can work together. I like the fact that we've put in some different things to hold everyone accountable. In terms of Project 1, very comfortable with moving the data equipment, but remember, we, we're going to be fine-tuning this for the next six or seven weeks. And I should bring back reports to you on everything that transpires before we actually make this move in October.
Yeah, I mean, as big as Project 1 sounds, it's actually the simplest project of them all. I mean, the only risk that we run, and there's just, you know, nothing we can do about that, is those discs in the servers have been running 24/7 for the past three and a half years and they're going to be shut down. And there's a chance that one won't spin back up when we move it. You know, we're going to back the data up before we do that, and as long as not more than one go down, we'll be fine. But all, while we have a good fiber internet connection, which will be tested prior to the move, and everything just goes down and comes right back up the way it was over there, wherever over there is.
But we'll tell you later. Madam Chair, I just wanted to make a comment that we need to make sure in that, in that meeting with, with whoever comes down, Friday Institute, MCNC, DPI folks, that Kannapolis is also included. Because they'll have ultimately, you know, I'm not sure what they file for E-Rate, but they will have the same concerns. They will have the same ability to use the cloud when it's ready, you know, all the different things that we would have, so, on a smaller scale, but they should be included. So, it's all agencies.
And they're part of our team anyway, so they are attending.
Right. I'm just saying, it may not happen on Monday.
Right.
So, don't count on that. Yeah.
We're comfortable with Project 2, which is the data migration to the SAN. The one piece, this one, even if we're looking maybe sometime in 2012 for this one, the issue here is that we're not comfortable until we have someone fully trained on Compellent, which is their version of the SAN. We use EMC, we have an engineer fully trained. Unfortunately, the engineer's in the room and we'll be saying goodbye to him at the end of this week. He's taken a job in the private sector. So, both the county and Kannapolis and Cabarrus, we're not comfortable with this until we have three individuals who are fully trained on, on this. have three individuals who are fully trained on, on this. So, again, that would be adding more time and getting all those pieces in place. But, yeah, go ahead.
But on that note, also, that one is done live while the data is still running. Nobody ever knows that anything has happened. We, they're all virtual servers already, so we're just migrating pieces one at a time, and you never even know it's down.
The piece on three, and I'm, I'm, I'm very glad to see Ms. Furtinball slow us up on this one, it's the issue of the high availability and the merging of the networks and having a common IP language, and that could, you know, we need to make sure we're all in agreement with that, and, and that one certainly needs more time and more tweaking with it. Okay, I, I just need to know what my direction is.
We're getting there.
We're getting there. I, I guess I wanted to follow up. I, I think your 90% was an honest answer, and I appreciate that. I mean, there are, we, it sounds like we have a contingency plan, there's things in place, but there's things that we don't know, so I, I wish you well. I'm confident, because of the, the people in your department that I have met, and the team that's on our side, I don't know anybody on the other side, but I'm confident of the people that I've met on our side, that it's going to go well, and that, at the end of the day, that, that this will go off without a hitch. So, if that means anything to you, I'm utterly confident in your ability to take care of this.
Okay. So I'm going to summarize what's going to take place. On August the 15th, the IAA will be placed on the action agenda for approval with the correction only of the federal being capitalized, okay? Schedule One appears to be okay, with some of the exceptions of the due diligence verbiage that you're talking about. So I'm going to place all the schedules back on the action portion of the agenda as well, hearing that there's probably no issues with the IAA schedule, schedules, the first one sounds good, but there may be a couple little tweaks with the Schedule Two and Schedule Three. I know the county's ready to get moving on this, and I know all of you are as well. So if there's anything that develops between now and that time that that meeting takes place, that you see there's going to be a problem, if you could get that message out to us immediately, so that we're prepared for that on August 15th Board Meeting?
If we are unable to get, I can't remember which member you wanted, was it Phil Emmer? To, if we're unable to get somebody down from the Friday Institute, within that time period of next week, will we then pull from and put this back on September?
No, they'll, they'll be available.
Okay.
She sounded really confident.
She sounds very confident.
Yeah, okay.
If they're uncommon person, it'll be a hardy, tell, tell them a video conference.
And I'd like to also tell you this, as far as the GovEd, we talked about, we do have a SharePoint site, and we'd like to give all of our board members access to it, so that you can read the minutes from our meetings and provide input ongoing.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just one more thing. I'd just like to recognize Adam Harkey, who's sitting in the back of the room.
Get up here, Adam.
And thank him for his years of service to our Technology Department. He was a young'un that came right out of the high school, Mount Pleasant High School, right, Adam?
Yes, 1998.
Yeah. And, because I remember it was the beginning of my time on the board, when that was so cool, that we had this kid who was basically working with our technology facilitators while he was still in high school, and the request came to the board to hire him into a full-time position. So, thank you for your service, and good luck.
Thank you.
And, and hope you'll remember us, and if you think of those things that somebody doesn't know, give Michael a call.
He knows where I live and has my phone number.
In 1998, I supervised Adam. That was the Tech Department of Cabarrus County Schools. Let's go sound how far we've come.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam.
I want Adam to tell you what he's going to be doing, because when we told the county that he was leaving, they were as upset as we were. So go ahead and tell them what you're doing.
I'm actually starting work with a company called Southeastern's Technologies Group, based out of Charlotte. They do not sell hardware or software, they sell engineering support. They are a big engineering contract with CMC, Charlotte Mecklenburg School System. They also do a lot of engineering and tech support with CMC Hospitals, the Carolina's Medical Center. They also were the group that actually did the conversion for Northeast Medical Center in Concord when CMC bought them out. And I've known several other engineers there for at least 14 years. So, I'm going into a job pretty much where I've, I've got friends and colleagues, and I think it's pretty, a pretty good fit, and I just hope it works out the way I want it to. Thank you.
Well, we wish you well.
Yeah.
Okay. While we're recognizing, I would like to recognize in the audience Debbie Brannon and Todd, is it Stanley?
Shannon.
Shannon, I'm sorry, I knew I would get that wrong. From Cabarrus County, and we appreciate your being here tonight. We, I know that was probably pretty painful to go through all that process with us, but I, I'm sure you understand how technical it is on our side. The copy that you were to receive, or your county manager, or your chairman, should have been given to them by your liaison, who had that book this past week. I was out of town, I had to leave to go out of town, so they actually have it, if they can acquire it from him. And you're hearing the changes, there's only one to the IAA, and then you've heard some of the scheduling issues, so you can work with Ms. Probst if there are any other issues, but we will be approving this on August the 15th, with the noted changes and corrections. Okay? And thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, Ms. Probst.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I just say that I worked with Cindy many years ago, back working with Cindy again, and I heard the, the little friendly comment about nitpicking, "Listen, we are fortunate to have her expertise on this board." This is so beyond me. And I, I, I'd just like to personally thank her, and for all, because that took a lot of her extra time to go over this stuff and, and nitpick it, and I thank you for being nitpicking.
And I would like to say thank you as well, because I sit in on my first technology meeting for the first time, and saw how difficult it is to get in there and hear all that, because I, this is not my expertise as well. So we are well represented on this board by Ms. Furtinball, and we appreciate it. That is a little painful occasionally, but we all make it through it, and it's well worth it, so thank you for your extra time and effort.
Well, you're welcome, and I could give you the rates my client pays, but I won't.
Yeah, we'd have to do a budget amendment for sure. Okay, next, we will move on to tab number, actually, it is, that is, no, no, we have got tab number 12.
Wow.
Yes, you only wish. Tab number 12, and we will, that is the approval to provide one mobile classroom unit to Kannapolis City Schools to use for its Head Start program, and we will have Mr. Lynn Wiki back to the podium.
Hello again. This request comes to us from Kannapolis City Schools. They, they have need of, of a mobile unit to place their Head Start administrative offices in, and in, in trying to be good neighbors, I, we're recommending that we offer them one of our existing facilities that we own and is, is in surplus right now. We're moving several from existing sites, and we thought, while we're moving, we'll just keep it on the road and, and move it up there for them. There's certainly costs attendant to them that they'll be facing, there's about $8,000 to make the move, and then whatever changes they want to make to the interior of the facility, they have to paint it, they have to coat the roof, all those things. So there's, there's probably $4,000 or $5,000 in addition that would, that they will face to, to make those repairs, so. It's, it's not without costs, but it's certainly cheaper than buying their own brand-new ones, so.
Board members, comments or questions? I'll start on Mr. Shu's side.
Thank you, Lynn. On this, I, I just was wondering how we were going to officially dispose of it, if it's going to be a loaner, is it going to be a gift, is it going to be a lease, or how are we officially going to dispose of the property?
That, that really, in my opinion, is up to the board, of course. I think we've, we've, we've done something similar with Rowan County Community College. In that case, it was actually serving our school's needs, but we have disposed of one in the past in a similar fashion.
When I'm talking about disposal, are we going to give it to them?
Oh, yep, that, that's our recommendation.
You're talking about a gift?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. Excuse me, sir, yes. That is our recommendation. Yeah, we, excuse me, yes, we need to declare its surplus and then offer it as gift.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's practically, that we give it to them, and then they can dispose of it in the future, if, if that's necessary.
Now, you said there would be some cost to us, though, for, for this replant and grass and everything?
There will, and, and I mean, that's a cost that we are going to have, whether we give them the unit or not. I mean, we're moving units, so that those, those, you know, we've, we've disconnected all of them, so the utility costs are all taken care of, and, and that's part of our normal process, and, you know, the, the cost is just whatever we normally face to repair the grounds once we've moved the vehicle, or a mobile.
You don't know what that cost would be, though?
No, I would think a few hundred dollars. It's just, you know, we're going to grade it and, and then plant some seed.
So, what is the pleasure of the board? May I place this on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, you will have tab number 13, approval to prepare the football bleachers at Northwest Cabarrus High School, and we will keep Mr. Wiki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is a clarification. As late as last week, Wednesday, in talking with the design consultant, the structural engineer for the project, what, what has happened is that there, there's two things going on with the stadium seating. They are aluminum bleachers or seats, for all intents and purposes, that are sitting on larger concrete bases, and, or, imagine large steps, if you've been to the Kannapolis baseball team's stadium, they have many areas that are just basically plain concrete, and along with the concrete, we came in later and put aluminum seats. And the seats are supported off, off a riser at, at the back, so it, it sort of comes out and it's cantilevered off of the concrete wall. I should have brought a drawing, but I, I hope you, what, what we're missing are, are feet that support these seats. So when kids and adults get excited in the bleachers, they, they tend to jump up and down, and, and they, they have damaged some of the seats, but more importantly, they're starting to pull out of the, the concrete. The concrete also is deteriorated, and we, we think that, in some cases, if you look at the plan of the bleachers, and we're really talking about only the home side at this point, there are similar problems on the, on the visitor's side, but not as serious. So we're addressing the home side first. You, you see that, that it's not continuous, it's not everywhere, it's in certain sections. So I suspect what happened is we simply got bad concrete, and, and it's deteriorating more rapidly in those sections. In some cases, it's cracking, spalling off, and in other cases, if you look at the stairs, it is an example, a good example, they're actually missing portions of the stairs, where they just, it's, it's washed away and, and literally become unsafe. And so, in talking with the structural engineer, and then the architect involved, what I'm recommending tonight is that we take off the aluminum seats, because as I said, they, they could be fixed temporarily, I just don't feel comfortable recommending that we fix them only to ultimately remove them. The long-term solution is to put brand, brand-new bleachers, aluminum bleachers back in place. And we have a, a whole program that we're, we have, you know, how, how we want to do that, but it pretty much eliminates what's there now. So our thought is, rather than doing a temporary fix, so the seating could be reused this season, we're just simply saying, "Let's just pull it off, get rid of it, make the concrete safe and sound for everybody to use, and then come back in next year with brand-new bleachers." And I've talked with Principal Reimer, she's fine with that. She said, you know, whatever is the safest and the most expedient way to go, that's what she wants to do. So that's our recommendation at this point. We have prepared to bid the project. I'm, I'm hopeful that we have better luck bidding this project than others. We have six or seven contractors in the area that are capable of doing the work, and we will have bids back the day of your next meeting, the 15th, so we hopefully can present that to you that evening.
Okay. And we'll start with Mr. Kiger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to make sure, I, I, I've got it. For this fall, the home side will just have exposed concrete.
Right.
But the visitor's side will still have the bleachers.
That is correct.
But then next summer, both sides will have new bleachers?
No, we're not funded, we don't have sufficient funding at this point to replace both sides.
Okay, so, so the visitor's side's going to stay as-is?
And clearly, it's not in as bad of shape as, as the home side, and I think partly because the concrete was deteriorating below the seats, that when people bounced on the seats, there was even more damage to both seats and concrete. And so we, we hope that we'll get another year or two out of the visitor's side after we repair it.
Eventually, a repair's going to have to be made on the other side, it's just not time-critical at this point.
Exactly, you're right.
How quick?
If it's, this method, we think, we can be done fairly quickly. It probably won't be ready for the first home game or so, but, but we hope to get it done sometime in September.
Okay, you're just putting it back to the way it used to be?
Exactly. That, that is correct.
Okay.
That's what I was going to clarify, so this is like how Mount Pleasant's and Concord's bleachers still are?
That's correct.
Where you just come sit on the step kind of thing. Central Cabarrus High School had the same bleacher toppers put on, are they having that same concrete problem? I know they had a concrete problem eight, 10 years ago. Yeah, but we thought we fixed Northwest at that point, too, but Northwest and the home side, I know Tim likes to laugh, I say the home side gets all the sun at Northwest, but when you look at that stadium sitting in the ball, the visitor's side is actually more protected from the elements than the home side is, and I think that's probably part of it, both from the runoff down the hill from the school, and from the sun, so the combination. But anyways, is Central going to have the same issue, or are they crumbling underneath theirs as well?
I can't honestly address that. I, I will check with our staff and find an answer for you.
Because, Tim, do you remember who else got those toppers at the time? Northwest and Central got it, but I don't know if anybody else did. But those schools are exactly the same age-old, within a year or so, so.
Well, they just, it sounds like they just got a bad batch of concrete. I'm not sure it was the toppers that did it, it was just the, whatever, the batch that came out. They just had a bad, bad batch.
Yeah, because the steps, the steps are even crumbling, which concerned me last year.
And it is dangerous. I'm glad to know that we're doing this, because I, I do remember, we, we looked at, I guess, when we were on our tour up there.
Mrs. Furtinball, you said Central or Central where?
Yeah, Central had those same bleacher toppers put on, and I know they had concrete issues some years ago, but that may have been remedied well enough.
Okay, I'll, I'll investigate that.
Clarify for me, you're going to repair the concrete, they'll use the concrete, and then when did you say you'd put the new toppers on the, on the home side?
We'll, we'll bid that in probably, I would say, late winter, early spring, we'll do the installation.
Okay. You, you'll find that in the next year, I tend to look at the sports program a little differently from my co-work. If we have schools that are using concrete without toppers, why can we not just say they, that they, we eliminate them, and rather than, in these economic times, replace them? I know that Duke University doesn't have a big football team, but do you know, they don't have, you sit on concrete in the Duke University football stadium. So, I mean, I don't know what the cost is going to be, but I hope we look at that and see if that's something you really need to do right now.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the, what is the board's pleasure, consent agenda, or would you like additional information and action?
Well, this is just the repair, this isn't the toppers.
You don't have the bid amount yet, so...
Yeah, this has to be action.
There has to be action.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Are you all ready?
Okay, I'm good.
Action, okay. Action, okay. And Lynn, you're good for what you need to bring back?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I mean, I know it's the bids, but that wasn't what I was talking about, but we'll go with that.
Right.
Okay.
And I'll find out about Central, and, right, as far as the, the next steps, we'll certainly study that as we move forward and look at those options, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion at the board convening closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, and pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3 to consult with an attorney employed or attained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. Have a motion in a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.